What a distinguished
Careful.
fine citizens, dedicated. This is the leadership of our town planning board. Look at that. Wow.
Very important.
We appreciate your time, truly. Not only here, but out in the woods and over the bridge and everywhere else and in the back of the jail, down the firehouse, whatever, and playing pickleball, watching money. So, let's begin. Good evening. Welcome you to the Exeter Town Planning Board meeting of Thursday, August 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board, and I'd ask Aaron, our Vice Chair, to introduce himself, please.
Aaron Brown.
Vice Chair?
Vice Chair.
Okay, come on, hold title. Glenn?
Gwen English. Don't have a title.
Okay. Board member, come on.
Board member.
John Gordon, a board member.
Okay. Your Honor.
Clark.
Pete Cameron.
All right.
Jen Martel.
Member.
Member.
Okay. Very good. We have just a few minutes.
Oh, Nancy.
We also have Nancy with us.
Oh, Nancy's with us. Hi, Nancy. Wherever you are. She's a little under the weather. That's me right now.
And Dave Sharple.
She'll be coming up soon, but she is with us both via Zoom, also regular member and Select Board's representative. So, appreciate all the time you've put together and starting the good old CIP this year, but we're going to, we have three sets of minutes to take care of, and I hope we could do these with what I call dispatch.
Uh, yes.
Can.
I have a number of comments, which will be 15 minutes.
Oh, my goodness sakes.
So, I would move we table them once again.
All of the minutes?
Next move. All of them.
Okay. I'll accept that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just move to second. Excuse me, voice vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Any ayes?
Thank you, Board.
Moving right along.
May I, Mr. Chairman, ask a question about that?
Yes.
Since it's, it sounds like it's quite, you have quite the comments.
Yes, sir.
Are they written down anywhere? Because maybe we could put it in the packet, not discuss them online, but put them in the packet so everyone kind of gets them beforehand, so.
I can, it'll take me a few days to do that.
Okay. All right, never mind.
They're not written down tonight.
Okay.
I was just saying, maybe.
They're done by line.
You need me to answer to save time, because we have quite the agendas coming up, too.
That was the purpose in my moving to table.
No, I meant on the next meeting.
Our agendas are full.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I know.
So. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing of the 2024 Capital Movement Improvements Program projects as represented by the town departments. Copies of the proposed documents will be available in the Planning Department office prior to the meeting and following the meeting, by the way. So, Dave, you have some comments, I think, to start off with, to set the stage here, please?
I do, thank you. This is the Capital Improvement Program, or I'll say CIP, stands for Capital Improvement Program. It's basically a six-year planning document, like a financial planning document. It looks at, we asked all department heads to provide, look at their departments, what are their major capital needs, planning needs, because there's studies, vehicles, you know, equipment, facilities, and they provide a list of their needs over the next six years and try to, you know, say, predict in the future what capital projects are coming in. It's a planning exercise. It helps with budgeting, through the Budget Committee, and future, future financial planning to try to keep a stable tax rate and, you know, order facilities on a rolling basis. So, tonight I've have the, the department heads that are going to be represented tonight that have CIP items in the draft that you received are police, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Recreation, Department of Public Works, Planning and Conservation. And as in years past, I've asked them to focus on the 2024 projects and present those, make sure they go over those, see if you have any questions, but also to highlight any future, large or significant future year projects, or any project that they deem worthy of letting the Planning Board know. But that said, you received a draft in your packet last week, and feel free to, while we have the department heads here, feel free to ask any and all questions about any of the projects, either funding requests in '24 or out to '29. And the process from here, this is a draft document, and these are draft sheets. It is under the purview, the Capital Improvement Program is under the purview of the Planning Board via state law, so you work through it and ultimately adopt it, and then after the adoption of it, it goes to the Budget Committee and the Select Board and ultimately decides what, what gets put on a warrant, and the voters ultimately decide to get what gets funded. So, without, without further ado, I'll pass it off to, the Police Department's going to be, the batting order is how I said, Police Department and the Fire Department will go first, in case anything, public safety, they need to leave, they can, they can leave after their presentation. So, I'll pass it off to, I think Deputy Chief Josh McCain is here to represent the Police Department, and he'll go over his CIP sheets. Thank you.
Good evening. I think the last time I saw you was when I just recently come back to work for the Town of Exeter, it was this time last year, and so it's good to see everyone again. Chief Pullen apologizes for not being able to attend this. He had matters to take care of. But I have three projects to, or proposals for the Board tonight to go into depth if they want, and two of them are joint with the Fire Department, and so I'll start with the one sole project or proposal that I'm bringing before you today.
Give us the page number, please.
You tell me what you're doing on.
Crime scene van.
Oh, the crime scene van. Yep. Oh, no. That's toward the end. Page 47.
Forty-seven?
Forty-seven. Everyone have their books with them? Yeah?
All right, we're all, we're all on page 47. Okay. So, this is a sole project that we're proposing tonight. Currently, the Town of Exeter and the Police Department does not have a vehicle specifically designed or meant to keep all of our crime scene processing tools, which can consist of large items such as huge canopies to shield when we're collecting evidence. If rains, it could, it could damage the evidence or prohibit us from collecting it. Physical barriers to keep, you know, there's, sometimes there's sensitive scenes that we have to protect, and we don't want people onlooking, and so there's large barriers that we have. Scene lighting, we've all seen it when we go to Lowe's or Home Depot that we have at our house, we have huge lights that come out and can illuminate a scene completely at night, so where we can process it right then and there, instead of possibly losing evidence. Additionally, we have large generators that run all of these crime scene processing tools that we have. I was thinking about this earlier. Law enforcement has changed drastically, and even in the last decade, and these are all the tools that a progressive police department has, and we have, we just don't have a viable way to get them efficiently to a crime scene at all hours of the night or during the day or whenever we need it. Right now, we have a decentralized program where several detectives will respond, and they jam stuff in the cruisers. They're stored all over the Police Department and any, any available place that we have, the garage, the Sallyport, which also doubles where we bring the people that we arrest, so all this stuff is tucked into corners, and it's dangerous as well. So, our proposal is, we, a couple of years ago, we did have a vehicle designated for this, the gracious from the Fire Department let us have one of their decommissioned ambulances, and we retrofitted to that, but that had reached its end of life. It rusted out, and we ended up trading that in. So, we don't have a vehicle right now currently that is equipped for the type of equipment that I was describing that we currently have. We just don't have a way to get it to the crime scene efficiently. Just to put into perspective, you know, since I've come on board, we've reduced our fleet size by one vehicle, and I plan on doing that again. Just through, we had extra vehicles taking up space that weren't really any available to us, so when we were able to get new cruisers the previous year, we were able to trade in one extra car and get money for that. It was really doing us no service. We couldn't really use it. It was all rusted out. So, we're trying to make room and get the appropriate amount of vehicles for a department our size. I came from a larger department where I spent the majority of my career, and they had a crime scene van, and I saw how big it was, and I'm not asking for that. I'm not asking for your endorsement on that. I'm asking for, again, another type of vehicle that is appropriate for a department our size, and that's why I did the research on the, you know, kind of like a Ford Transit van or an E-Cargo van, and it's the appropriate size for a department for us. The cost of it is just roughly $60,000, but that is buying, purchasing the vehicle, which is the bulk of that, as well as equipping it with the lighting package and the cargo compartment that would go in the back that would hold all of the equipment. So, that's the cost, and that's the proposal I have in front of you. If anyone has any questions or.
All the equipment that went to it, is the equipment we own?
Yes. Yep.
So, it gives, it gives you the van and outfitting with the shelving that you need?
Yeah, the shelving, I did research, there's companies that have, you know, for all the trades and all that, you could pick whatever shelving configuration that you want. That's relatively the least amount of this process, and it's all bolt-in, and it would be easy for the town to do. That wouldn't be ordering the van with it. They would, that would come later.
In a, in a, let's say, in a month's time period, how often, and I know things will change as time goes on, but how often have you been in a situation where you've wished that you had that?
The Criminal Investigative Division and the crime scene team that we have that is comprised of both patrol officers and the detectives, they process anywhere from one to two crime scenes a week. I mean, I was just woken up two days ago at midnight saying that we had one, and we had to roll out and, and do it, but, you know, like you said, it's, I could give you an exact statistic of how many they came out, but it's averaging out to one to two times a week that they're out there processing some sort of crime scene. Some of them are large and labor-intensive, some of them are very quick. We can get through it with just bringing out some of the stuff that we have in the cruisers, but when we get large ones, like think about the Easy Mart robbery that we had, the train accident that, that we had not too long ago, those are the type of scenes that we need the larger amount of equipment to help us do our job.
Right.
And it becomes, it becomes a puzzle piece trying to figure out how you're going to efficiently get all of your equipment to the scene to help you out so we can.
Makes sense.
Process it.
And it would be exclusively for that? I mean, once you get all the equipment in, there's really nothing else you would be using it for?
I couldn't see, I couldn't see another aspect of it. It's going to be designed and set up for the Criminal Investigative Division.
Okay.
I don't see it doing road jobs. It's not going to be able to do road jobs out on the road or direct traffic, you know? If we have a parade or something, maybe we could put it out to, it's another marked vehicle, but it's not going to be out enforcing the laws or traffic enforcement or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, cool. That's the, that is the one proposal that is.
Before we leave. Is this going to be under your control, or is this, basically, a call comes in, who gets to drive, drive this vehicle?
Any sworn officer of the Exeter Police Department could drive it, but it's going to fall under the Criminal Investigative Division, which is your detective division for the Exeter Police Department.
So, there'll be no new staff?
No.
Designed specifically to this vehicle?
No, we currently have four detectives and one detective sergeant, and then you have me overseeing the detective division. That's typically who respond. You also have several patrol officers that are specifically trained for crime scene processing, so they could drive it, but absolutely no staff will be added for this. This is all existing equipment that we have and the existing department members that we would have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Good question. Anyone else? Well, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir.
The dispatch console, page 11.
Good evening. Justin Pizon, your Assistant Fire Chief. So, you're going to see a couple of projects tonight that revolve around our radio system. About eight and a half, nine years ago, we started because some updates, we have a, the backbone of our radio system right now resides at the water tower over on Epping Road. That is our main backbone of our radio system. In 2021, the town supported a repeater site on the east end of town, which is now on top of the Fuller Lane Water Tower. And I'm going to skip a little bit, because this is both public safety. We're also looking to add a new repeater site on the, Dave, can you just, I'm going to the repeater site one, I think it's the next page?
Yeah, 12. Page 12.
We're also proposing this year to finish our radio system that started eight years ago, to complete a repeater site on the Crossroad Water Tank. This assessment was done roughly 10 years ago, where our state sanctioned service provider came in and did an assessment of the Town of Exeter with topography and all that good stuff, and I'm happy to say this is the last leg of that system to complete our radio technology in the Town of Exeter. So, the quote I have is, I believe it says to be determined in your packet right now. We did not have the price and time to put that in there, so I wanted to provide that for you tonight, so you'd have that. So, this year, that's going to be about a $93,000 project to complete the radio system. The only difference being at the Fuller Lane Water Tower, we had a little bit of an advantage on Fuller Lane, where there was already a water and sewer building on site, so it was easy. We had a spot to add our infrastructure into a building which does not exist on Crossroad. So, when that got supported in 2021, the cost was about $76,000. That was deferred until 2022, so we just finished it last year. This has, this quote provided contains a cabinet where the infrastructure can be contained, attached to the water tower, doesn't interfere with the water at all, and we'll put a communication ring on top of that tower, and if you see these little round, white, I'm going to call them antennas, they are, but you'll see them on 101 as well, those are actually line-of-sight antennas that are line-of-sight. So, the ones you see on 101 are used by the State Police and the Department of Safety, but you'll see them in town here, and you'll, someday you're going to see them, like, ah, I know what that is now. So, that's what we're looking forward to do on Crossroad. That is a public safety initiative, because it's not just the Fire Department. It includes Police, Fire, and Department of Public Works right now, its radio system is also housed at the Epping Road Water Tower, so if the need arises in the future, because they had poor reception in areas of town, they could also be added onto that system. I know I taught technology sometimes, I started to lose people, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Well. Any questions? Yeah. You say this has been an ongoing project for 10 years, if I.
That is correct.
Is some of the equipment that was, that started 10 years ago, is that out of, well, that's, is that out of date?
It's not. So, luckily, the technology we purchased then was cutting-edge at the time, so it's IP-based technology, so it utilizes the Internet, for lack of a better term, so it's not necessarily all antenna-based. So, the IP technology we have today in our existing facilities is going to be compatible with this new system, and I'm putting this one first because it's going to tie into the console conversation I'm going to have next, so, so, yeah, so that technology is still all compatible today. It's still current, no foreseeable end of life on this equipment, which is good news, so this is all Motorola. Motorola tries to give you some advance notice, though we have been caught by surprise on the console, I'll talk about next, but right now, everything is compatible. So, I envision that someplace long in the future, after I'm no longer with the Fire Department, there will be an opportunity to upgrade that equipment, but I don't see that happening in the next decade.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you.
So, the next project I want to talk about was the console, which is on the page initially mentioned.
11.
Page 11? Let me start by saying this, I'm not a radio expert, so do the best I can here, but I am the person who maintains most of our portable radios in town, so I felt the best way to try to explain the situation we found ourselves in is to read directly from the owner of Two Way Communications correspondence we had to try to articulate where we stand today with our consoles. Our consoles right now are two seats that take place in our dispatch center, where our dispatchers sit, that dispatch for both Police and Fire. Those consoles are the radio systems that operate all of our radios. So, there, we have the backbone at the water tower on Epping Road. Downtown, we have the people who sit behind the consoles and do the heavy lifting, dispatching, taking calls, and all that good stuff. Much to our surprise, usually we hear about this sooner, Deputy McCain and Chief Pullen, within the last eight months, were notified that, hey, by the way, your consoles are severely out of date, and we no longer can support them. And they're like, what does that mean? So, I wanted a little bit more than that from the technician, so I just, bear with me, I have about five sentences I want to read to you directly from the owner, Bill Bartlett, of Two Way Communications. "Your current dispatch console has been out of production for more than eight years and is no longer supported. We have had several systems of the same vintage as Exeter's fail in the last couple of years, the most recent due to a lightning strike just weeks ago. We have resorted to sourcing used equipment from third parties to restore these systems. The outages were extended, and using surplus used equipment is less than desirable. We have been successful at keeping these systems running, but all of them now are in the process of immediate replacement. I would strongly recommend moving forward with the placement of your MCC, which is the console, as soon as practical. It is an IP-based system, and relocating it is not difficult." So, if we had to move things around at some point in the future, that equipment can be relocated without any issue. Our fear right now, and not realizing, because obviously the cost was a surprise to all of us, when you see a price of $281,000, that we fear that it's only going to take a single lightning strike or some other event to take place, and we've lost our radio system, because without those consoles, we have no ability to communicate with anybody in the field. That console was there. I've been to the Fire Department over 20 years, and that was already in place when I started. So, it just gives you an idea, if anybody's got a 20-year-old phone they're carrying around, then probably, things have probably changed a little bit in the last 20 years. So, we understand it's a big ask. We feel it's a top priority for our public safety, both Police and Fire, for the Town of Exeter, and we're hoping to answer any questions you might have on that project.
Questions?
If the brand-new one should get hit by lightning, it can be replaced in a matter of days?
Yeah, I think that's the benefit, it's current technology, so those systems are being built and installed currently today, so I would, I would feel comfortable in saying that, yes, there was going to be, I'm going to tell you, there's a lead time with everything right now, I'm not going to, it's, everything's extended, but it's hard to get a lot of equipment.
If we had loss in communication, though, that would be a top priority, where they would have technicians that could do it?
Yeah.
The way this all came about was when we were.
Can you, you speak a little.
Getting ready for the proposal for the safety complex last year, and we started kicking it off, and part of that was researching what a new console would cost for a new complex. So, when we brought the representatives from Two Way in, the first person who came in didn't even know what model this was, because it was, she had never seen it before, because that's how old it was.
Classic.
So, it's not a scare tactic. It works, or people do the best job that they can with it. It's just, there's no parts for it if stuff does break, and that's the real, that's what scares me, is when I get the call saying our dispatch center is down, because that's the lifeline. We called it the backbone. It's the lifeline for the, the people in this community, so when they do have an emergency, either the Fire Department or the Police Department, or both, can get to where they need to go. Communication is the, is the biggest thing, and this was sprung on us, like you said, roughly eight months ago, when we started preparing for this, for the last time.
In the event that lightning strikes tonight, you'll go to cell phones or must be some way to communicate?
There, we'll find a way. It's less than desirable to start calling officers on their cell phones and trying to get them because the cellphone coverage drops all over Exeter. But there is, there is redundancy in emergency plans in place. One of those would be, you know, we would immediately switch over to Rockingham County Dispatch. They're way overburdened. The city of Portsmouth is on them right now. And it's, they were overburdened before the city went on there. And it's, that's not a viable long-term solution. It's a short-term solution to make sure we can get emergency services to the town, the people of Exeter.
Yeah, and I think it's important.
We want the people to know that we aren't gonna be dead in the war.
No, we won't. We'll find a way.
It's important to know, because I wanna go back to the other comment, is that there is, even in the system of self-discovery, but redundancy, there's a second radio actually embedded in these systems. So if your primary radio is down, you have a backup to fall back on. At the fire station right now, we actually have, we have what's a, on dispatch, it's a, we call it a, it's a mobile radio. So the ones that we would install in a cruiser or in a piece of fire apparatus, we actually have one of those on a desk right now. Worst-case scenario, we lost everything. We have a mobile radio we could use. But it's strictly to talk on a radio. We look into a ton of details of how we dispatched. There's other technology that dispatches us. But in the worst-case scenario, we'd still be able to communicate.
Thank you. Are there questions or thoughts?
Did you say you have two consoles now?
Correct.
And this is just for, this, the 281 is just.
Yeah, this replaces, this replaces in kind. This replaces in kind what we currently have. So this would be, they call it a console, but it actually is two seats for the console. Yeah, this, we have two dispatchers on a certain times of the day.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, this could be moved if another project is financed through the town. And we can take the brand-new dispatch.
Just saying.
Bring it over there.
Yeah, that was an important part of the process because we were kind of, I mean, ideally, I would've liked to have kicked the can, I'm gonna be honest with you, and kind of wait and see what happens. But we both were nervous about, after the conversation we had with our, our service provider, it literally laid the groundwork of, and that's why I was like, geez, we don't wanna invest this money and then find out we have to move it, and is that gonna be a big problem? Like, absolutely not, because IP-based equipment is just plugging in an ethernet connection, essentially, and you reestablish your connection. So as long as there's internet connection, then we would have radio usage, which, I mean, it's simplified, but that.
Sir? Oh, Pete, yes.
So it's a fixed location where this will be?
Correct.
Therefore, what I was gonna say, it's not portable?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that's assuming something else, but right now, this is located at the main station.
Yep, correct. If you would've pulled behind the complex right now, you'll see a small brick outhouse that's attached to the back of the building. That houses right now not only some of the IT equipment for town, but that's where our console, radio equipment, a lot of what drives those computer-based equipment on the consoles resides currently.
Thank you.
And the networks. And the networks, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so my final proposal is one we're all familiar with. We proposed it last year. It would be the safety complex, the joint safety complex between the fire department and the police department.
Page four.
Okay.
Am I already crashing?
It's a police station with a fire station, so you're the lead tenant.
We would be the lead tenant in this project.
Yeah, 17.6.
Yeah. We'll correct that.
Yeah.
We've already shared $80,000 off the project.
We appeared before you last year. We outlined our reasoning, why we believe that a new police station is imperative for the way we do business. I can reiterate some of that. I started off my first proposal saying that law enforcement has changed over these, you know, the last 40 years, which is, you know, the age of this building or the complex that we're in right now. The building has not. I can tell you and stand in front of you and say that the police department and the fire department, but I don't wanna speak for them, have maxed out and utilized every square inch that is available under the current 6,000-square-foot facility that the police department operates in. We have police executives in closets. We don't, we have one jail cell. We used to have four because the rest of them are housing, securely housing all of our records that we're required to keep via state law. There's no place to put, and we're busting at the seams. It's not, there's security aspects of it. We don't have a secure parking lot. I can tell you, you know, personal information that, or an example is we had an officer confronted in our back parking lot less than two weeks ago. And this is him just coming out of the police department, and somebody that he stopped on the road several hours later was waiting to confront him. That's the reality of what our officers are facing every day, is when they walk out of their, their own police department, they have to be prepared to deal with somebody that can come in to an unsecured lot. Evidence is huge in the law enforcement. It's one of the highest liabilities that we have. We do a very good job with the evidence room that we have. It's very neat and orderly, and I could take you all in there, and you would be like, this is very, this is organized great. It's busting at the seams, and again, we don't have enough space to hold on to these cases. Per statute, we're required to hold on to this evidence, and we're running out of areas to keep even just the basic evidence. When I first started, because I started my career here, I remember we were given a Polaroid camera. And I was allowed to take three photos for a crime scene with a Polaroid. And now you have with the, you know, the advances in technology and what we expect and what the town people expect out of their police department is because they watch these shows and they see that, you know, we talked about the crime scene processing. We do that, and we're capable of doing that. But that brings in a lot more evidence, and that's what's required to successfully prosecute cases. So that means we have to have locations within the department that are secure that can actually house this stuff. And it's not shrinking. It's only growing day by day. So evidence is a big thing. We, I know the chief last year spoke about the safety of people within our building, meaning the booking room's safe, I'll tell you that. When we process somebody, it's a safe way when you have one officer and the person that you're processing. But when you release that person, who's sometimes, I will be honest, they're not happy with the police department or anything that we've just done. But we're releasing them. The only place that we can release them out is is where two administrative assistants have their backs to them, within feet, like, to meet the chief. That's not safe. And there's times where we have to remove people that are just doing their job from their computers just to walk somebody out of the police department. There's no elevator, and the chief spoke about this last year. Whether you have a mobile, mobility-challenged person that wants to come and report a crime, we don't have an interview room on the first floor. It's on the second floor. If you wanna go meet with the chief privately. Spaces within the department, even to have meetings, which could be from the public, it could be within interdepartmental, there's no training space. There's very few spaces where you can have a private meeting if you were a person of, you know, a resident of Exeter that wanted to have a private meeting with somebody within the police department. We were utilizing a makeshift, or it was a utility room, and we were utilizing that as an interview room until, that we were told that it's dangerous, and we're no longer allowed to do that. And I'll be the first one to tell you, when I walked in there, coming back here, it's, if you were coming in and if I put, had you guys put yourself or in the shoes of somebody that was reporting a crime, and it could be something, you know, you're trying to describe an experience that happened to you that's private. And, you know, I don't wanna say embarrassing, but it's, it's a very private thing, and you're expecting to come into a nice, safe space. And we bring you into a closet that has wires coming down, and that's the only place that we can actually interview you. It's not gonna solicit, you're, not the willingness, but it's just not a good environment for somebody to actually report a crime that is near and dear to their heart. The lobby itself is cramped. It's not inviting. What we've seen over the last decade is people demand, they demand a different type of policing. And they want to have the transparency. They wanna feel welcomed by their police department. And when you walk into our lobby, it's, you're not getting that welcoming feeling. Now, it's not all aesthetics, but it's, we provide a service, and that's one aspect of the service where you have a person of the community that wants to come in and interact with the police department, and you don't know what window to go up to, and you can't see through the windows, and, and you just don't have a lot of room to even move, even within the lobby. That's your first impression of our police department when you come in.
Yep.
You know, we talked about the, our staffing hasn't necessarily changed in the last decade or so. What has changed is the equipment that each individual police officer wears. I can tell you that all the lockers that they come in and store their gear in, it's, they're one-foot lockers. They're less than what the high school kids have, and we're expecting them to keep outer vest carriers, which are bigger and bulky now. Law enforcement has changed, and I, that's one of the things that I've said over and over again with all these proposals, is it's changed so drastically within the last decade, but that, this building hasn't. And we don't have any room to change it. And that's why, you know, I can go on and on about, you know, the deficiencies of the current building. We make do. We do the best we can for the town of Exeter. And we will continue to do the best we can for the town of Exeter. And it was heartbreaking that this, this didn't pass last year, and we were so close. But I can see that the town supports and backs the police department. And that's not something I necessarily had in my last department, and it's a breath of fresh air. And we're so close to, you know, advancing law enforcement and the ability of the fire department to better serve the town of Exeter. And that's why I'm asking you to support this project. And I went on some tangents, but I have the fire chief here that will be able to accurately speak on his aspect of it. But if you guys have any question about law enforcement, I've always offered, and the chief's always offered, if you ever wanna tour the, the police department, we can show you. There's videos of it on the town of Exeter's website. You know, we just have no more room to grow. And not grow people, but just actually have the equipment that we have and, and to do the best job that we need for the, the town of Exeter.
I got a few questions. Do you wanna wait? Do we have questions?
Let's ask questions of the police while we're here, shall we?
The picture of the building looks like the same one that didn't quite pass last year.
Yes.
Correct, and no changes.
Nothing has changed.
But we.
And that's just an artist's rendition.
Yeah, I hope.
Unless it passed, that's when the, you would actually, they gave you a, a good faith estimate of what the building could look like.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily mean that every brick and every window is gonna be exactly there, but it's just, that's what it could look like.
Is, is there room to add on to this building? When the time comes, what's gonna happen?
There is some.
So if you want a third bay for another engine, something?
That's doable.
Yeah.
That's more easily than the police department.
Yeah.
Well, there, there was a couple of things. One thing, the, there is room to the left. I mean, it's a small site. It's, it's the site we own. It's two acres, so, or 1.98 acres or whatever. It's, it's just, it's, it's a small site. But it had room enough, we actually designed, I think, conceptually, three apparatus bays out there. And then out back on the second, on the second floor, there was a.
Above the Sally Port, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, above the Sally Port, there was an open area that we had put some decking on. But at first, it was actually conditioned space all the way. And then the police and fire, we really sharpened our pencil and kind of reduced, you know, the, the square footage needs. So that space could always be utilized. I think it was a couple hundreds, I mean, it was a few hundreds.
It was, and we also discussed that there was room for an outbuilding where we could store, like, a car that we have for, if we get a car on, and it's a suspected crime, and we're gonna do a search warrant, we have to have it secure. Right now, that eats up our Sally Port, which is our garage. It's how we bring the prisoners in and out. And it's also where we would have to house securely, because it's under camera, a vehicle that we're applying for a search warrant. We talked about it. There was enough room. It's whether we, you know, it didn't need to be supported right away, but you have a little bit of room that we could build something like that in the future if, if it was deemed appropriate, but.
How much has the price changed from last year?
It's seven and a half, I can answer that. It's seven, the, last year was $16,300,000. I called the professional estimator that did the, did these numbers for that and to say, what number do we use this year? And he said, what I've been seeing in the industry, what I can guarantee you is that it's going to be more next year than it is this year. I can guarantee you that. Or confidently say, pretty much guarantee. And he said, I've been seeing about seven and a half percent annual increase. So that number, 17.6, was, was incorrect. We actually changed it. I'm sorry it didn't get into your packet. It's actually $17,522,500, which represents a seventeen and a half, seven and a half percent increase, annual increase for one year. Because the original buyout was in, if it passed, was gonna be quarter one of '24. And now this is quarter one of '25, if it passes.
And I don't see it on the rendering, but it's only rendering. You, you will have a fence around this one to?
Yes.
So you don't have the issue.
Yeah, and that actually brings up a good point. I was noticing it today is there's, if you look at it, there's, you know, you have a parking lot here across the street from the, the police department, but there's only three dedicated spots for if you were coming to report anything to the police department. This builds, if you're, if I'm looking at the building, the front of the building, the entire right side of the building is all for civilians or residents that want to come in. And I, I don't have the amount of spots there is, but it's, it's, I think, double-digit spots for parking for the residents. Because what we're seeing is, this would be a big change. You're taking your current police department, which is, say, downtown, where it is walking distance for a lot of people, and you're moving it on the outskirts. So you have to be able to provide extra parking spaces for the residents to come in and meet with the police, report incidents to the police. In there, there's a, we call it a training room, but it was also double as a community space room to where people could use that for meetings, public meetings. So you have to have the ability to park people out there. And that has that, and it also has a secured back lot where all the cruisers would be. And if you, I don't know if you guys saw that, but last week, a neighboring town just had two of their cruisers had rocks thrown through their cruiser windshields, brand-new cars. That's the reality of what can happen. We all see where our cruisers are parked, and I thank God every time when I come in, in the morning, and our cruisers aren't destroyed because they're right there on the roadway. And it would be very easy. But that's the stuff that is happening now. But these would all be secured behind a security fence, as well as the officer's cars and the firefighter's on-shift car.
Is this on a, is this on a slab or does it have a cellar? I'm thinking for storage. Do you have a, is there?
It's on a slab.
It's on a slab.
It's on a slab?
We start talking about cellars, the price tag goes way up.
It goes way up? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're confident that this, this building has ample space. I mean, we looked at a 20-year horizon from now, and, you know, for 20 years, we feel it has ample space. I mean, after that, it get, the future gets a little fuzzy because, you know, sometimes you don't know what's gonna happen with population. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes, you know, stays, levels off. So we're confident 20-year horizon.
No basement.
No basement.
Okay.
And you can't, I mean, you wouldn't put it under the apparatus bay, that would be.
No, 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 I was, I was thinking under, out of the other area, whether you might have. It would be a way to expand, but going down instead of out, but, okay.
So is anything different about this proposal from last year's proposal, except for the price?
No.
So how, so last year, it, I was just looking it up. It needed 60% of the vote. It got 57.1% of the vote, which is very close.
Forty-five votes.
Yeah.
If they had 45 votes.
Forty-five more votes.
From, went from no to yes, it would've passed. The voter turnout was 13.7% voter turnout because it was a snowstorm.
It was a bad weather.
It was a blizzard.
Yeah, I remember that.
It was a blizzard.
Oh, yeah.
That's too bad. Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, like, I mean, clearly, this is something that our town needs. I mean, we haven't even gotten into the fact that, like, the, the fire substation being closer to the high school and all the neighbors on the west side of town, I think that's really important. And it just, I would hate to see this go on the ballot and lose by another 45 votes again, and then the price goes up another million dollars, like, like. Like, like, what can we do as a town to, to kind of get the word out and get people to come out and vote for this? Because we're just shooting ourselves in the foot by not allowing this to get started.
It seems, it seems that if, if you just pound this message home, that all the things that you've talked about tonight are really important. And I, I think last year, I think a lot of people got hung up on, on other aspects of it that came out, which were not, I don't know how to put this. I think they, I think they carried too much weight, not, not by any attention that you had, it just sort of happened that way. And I think if you can just keep going back to safety, space, comfort for people coming in who need police support, all the things that you've talked about tonight are just, they're kind of, they're so important. And some of the little, other little features that came with this building last year got, got too much spotlight. And I don't know how you deflect that, I don't know how you balance that out. I mean, we want the police force to be happy, we want you to have some comfortable comforts too. But, but it's, I think, for the people in town, the other things, the meat and potatoes are really, really what are going to get you the votes that you need. And whether you, you know, take pictures of various aspects of the current space and have those somewhere so people can see them and say, wow, that, that's, that's not a good space for such and such, or highlight the safety features for your police force when they're getting in and out of their cars. I mean, those, those things can just somehow portray those to the public so they understand.
May I ask, one of the things was the deck, is that?
Yeah.
And I just, let me take a moment, can I take a moment?
And I only say that because that's what I kept hearing.
We, we did hear that. And, and what happened was, originally, it was designed, the, the square footage, I forget what it was, it was around 21,000 square feet, and the, the original building. And we looked at it, and they kind of used standard, standard sizes of various things, industry standards, you know, those sort of things. And the price at the time, and still is, per square foot is through the roof. I mean, the last five years, building square, per square foot is just, I mean, it's, I forget what the percentages were, but it's, it's, it's gone up significantly. So we're space-conscious, like, we don't want to get, we want to get what you need, the space you need, but let's look at each space. I mean, we looked at every storage room, you know, every community space, every office, and tried everything, and redlined it all with the police and fire. And we kind of got down a little bit, okay, we can shrink it, we don't need this much, we don't, you know, not to say you don't, you know, just look at it, this is the industry standard, what do you actually need? Not saying, you know, just make it less, just to make it less. So what happened was, we lost a lot, we, we, we cut it off by about 3,000 square feet or so. And that made this, this building, it took the second floor, and we were able to do this, and put a rubber roof. And on that rubber roof, we decided, oh, well, in the interim, that would make a nice outdoor space for officers that deal with, you know, crime scenes, very emotional calls and so forth, to come back and have just like a, a rest area to go out and just sit. So actually, it ended up being a cost-saving measure. Because we reduced, you know, whatever, a couple thousand square feet of conditioned space, so we thought, okay, just put some decking on the rubber roof.
Not even decking, I think we just put a wall and a door to it.
I think we put a wall and a door to it, just to, just to be able to walk out there. So, and it kind of, it kind of turned into something that was an extravagance, but yet it, it was created out of a cost-saving effort.
And it's going to be built in such a way that we can reclaim that space if we need it.
Correct.
So we'll get 2,000 feet we need in five years.
Correct.
That's where it is.
Correct. So, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I think that's great. I never, never heard that, and that's, I mean, at some point, if you wanted a space that was pleasant, someplace after a horrible day, you could go out and, and take a deep breath and.
And it's safe, because it would be secured behind the department. I mean, we have, it's no different than the space that they have, there's a beautiful patio outside the police department right now, that the officers utilize. It's just not secure.
Is there a gym?
Yeah, there's a, there's a training room and a small gym. And I heard that there was some people questioning, well, why do they need a gym in their own police department? It's very standard. You know, I don't want to say, speak for the fire department, but there's a gym in the fire department right now that the police department uses. So it's just, it's going to be over there. It just happened to be tacked onto our side of the building. But I will throw this out there, is to be certified as a New Hampshire police officer, you have to pass a physical, a physical fitness test. So it's a requirement to keep their jobs. And now people are saying, well, that's just frivolous, you know, why do they need a gym there? Well, it's part of their job. They need to pass a physical fitness test. And it's either that, or they go to spend their own money, and, which is fine, out whatever gyms there are, but you're also working next to the people that you are policing. And that's not a, a viable option at times as well, when you're asking for a spot from a guy that you just arrested. And that's the reality, and I speak kind of frankly on this, but that's what these, the ladies and gentlemen that we have employed by our police department, that's what they deal with. And that's not necessarily what, and these are great questions, and I love, and I'll speak passionately about it. But it's not just, hey, let's throw Bally's Gym in, in the police department, just because we can. It's, it's not. It's a serviceable space, and we even divided it up, because part of our certifications every year is defensive tactics, or, or any type of physical maneuvers to take somebody into custody, it's a requirement. That's a space that we can do it, instead of begging the fire department to use their training room and displacing them that we currently do right now, or outsourcing it to one of the, the gyms that we see out on Portsmouth Ave, and that's what we did last year, or begging PEA if we can, and they're gracious to let us have their wrestling mats. But they're not always going to be able to be available to us. So those spaces are very, very important to the police department. And to include the training room, because what we've heard time and time again, and we've seen, is the general population wants well-trained police officers. And, you know, you want somebody that's physically fit that can come help you out. And that's what these training spaces are. We don't have the ability to even host any training at the, our current department. Anytime we have, you know, a, a larger training, and even that, we can't put our whole police department in the fire department's training room right now. And like, in, in real world, what actually happens is, like, we just implemented body cams, that the whole police department has to be trained in them, so it's easy to do it, try to do it at once, but we can't even do that. So this, this will pay it forward to where you have well-trained police officers, community space, where any, any type of community outreach that needs to have a space, it's a safe space for them to have a, a community meeting after hours, and that can be controlled, not controlled, but actually looked after by the police department, that will be right there. Or if there's a medical emergency, you have a fire personnel that's right there that can help somebody out. So these spaces, and, and Dave said it, we sat around the table how many times and cut this current model down as much as we can without sacrificing the reason why we're doing it, or services.
Okay, let's go to the fire department.
I can talk forever, so.
Your, their side of the story?
Two, two things. I'm glad you recognized Eric Wilk, I'm your fire chief. And I'm glad you recognized what Deputy McCain just covered was probably the best explanation of why we need a police station, I've heard. And we covered a lot of ground last year. We did a lot of, lot of show and tell and a lot of focus groups, but a lot of things he just touched on in that five or eight-minute intro were absolutely imperative. And we've already covered the 800-pound gorilla. We've already covered the deck and the gym. And I'm here to tell you, a 300 or 400-pound fireman, a cop, just does not instill a great deal of confidence. We have to have people strong enough to help people get out of burning buildings and down ladders. We work 24-hour shifts. The gym or a fitness area is an imperative part of our life and focus. A lot of people find stress relief in working out either before or after a shift. That's all part of where our industries are going now. And we ask for the town's support, and not use those as polarizing reasons to vote something down, but embrace the fact that we're willing to, to work out and, and train and be fit to serve this town. So those would be great things. But thank you so much for bringing it up. Things that you brought up, Jennifer, we had a brainstorming session less than two weeks ago. One of the things we'd like to do is create a focus group, ways we can get beyond where we were last year, ways we can kind of drag 45 more people if we only get 13% of the vote out, but perhaps hundreds of people to support a project that is absolutely worthwhile and needed in this town. And unfortunately, we just aren't, the price is never going down. The, the project just magically isn't going away. It's a beagle, it's gone. It's coming. Whether it's 16.3, 17.5, or a number to be determined, the project is coming. It's just, how do we help articulate that need to the public? And we're hoping to get some people like yourself that wouldn't mind, you know, helping, share thoughts and say, why would you vote for it? What's the problem? You know, and that, that's something, and I know Dave was leading it for us. Quick, you heard the same spiel. The fire department has outgrown its space. I too have officers in closets. My fire prevention officer is in electrical room, and my training officer is in the fire clerk's room. We put desks in there, and that's what they call home, and they do their job. The building in 1970, it was built for a staff of five. We now have a shift of seven, so two of the firefighters working a shift are sleeping in closets that were originally linen closets or storage closets, and they do their job. We have a training room that now fits 20 people. I have a staff of 35, and you have a staff of?
Twenty-nine, or 26.
26. Neither of us can have a department-wide meeting in our training and meeting room in the current facility. That room also serves as the town's emergency operations center, where we run drills and exercises, and thankfully, it's been years since we've had flooding and storms. But that's where the, your town leaders, you see here, will assemble and come up with a plan and respond and offer services to our town in a crisis. And it barely fits 20 people. So we are, we are busting at the seams, both of us. I think we've done a good job articulating that. I think the fire station on that piece of property is absolutely essential to deliver town services on many fronts. It alleviates the immediate crowding downtown. The fire station on 20 Court Street is never going away. We will always have a presence at 20 Court Street in, in our lifetime. So we're going to keep people, we're going to keep apparatus, we're going to have a fire station there. But by moving two or three people out to Continental Drive, some apparatus out to Continental Drive, it gives us some breathing room. The immediacy of our space problems is alleviated by a new building. To your question about building on, the only thing we lose on the property is we, we now have 360-degree access to the property through paved roads. If we did build one bay onto that, we would lose one of our access roads. So we'd have to enter the police security area from the top, and the fire trucks from the bottom. We would end up using a bit of an access road as a bay. We don't anticipate really needing it short-term. As Dave said, 20 years, it gets fuzzy. But for the term, we're building double-deep bays, so we can actually park apparatus behind. We're confident that two bays double-deep will meet the needs of the town with the Court Street building here as well. But that building gets us access to both sides of the railroad tracks. That building gets us immediate access within a four-minute response time to a huge piece of town, including our town's high school and Route 101. The numbers I was just poring over, our, our current facility, we are able to respond to about 82% of calls. I know I hate percentages, but 82 is not a bad number. But with two fire stations, or a station and a substation, we can respond to people's homes and businesses 95% of the time within four minutes or less. Four minutes is a national standard, a benchmark that we, we measure ourselves to. I think 95 is an awful good number to move a fire station out and join our police brethren out there and, and offer services to that side of town. You've heard it all before. I don't want to bore you any longer, but I'd be more happy to take any other questions that you might have that you haven't already asked Deputy McCain.
I just would comment that, back to what you said, this is all about safety for the community, not just you guys and gals, everybody. It truly is, that's, to me, that's a message that needs to be somehow understood. Gee, I'm going to be in a safer situation. Oh, my officers will be safer, my fire people will be safer.
I don't, I don't disagree with you.
We don't have to have that.
In the interim, I think our people are safer. I mean, our employees are safer, and that should, as, as a department manager and a town leader, that is, deep on my mind, are my people safe? But we can absolutely offer better service to the town. The chief talked about people coming to report a crime and, and how we can get them into a building safely and get, and get people that, that have done things that they shouldn't have, that are now under arrest or being processed in and out of buildings safely, and cohabitate. You know, right now, we have anywhere from seven to 12, 13 fire employees in the same building as the police department, and it is not all that secure. So these are all issues we think about every day, as we work together. And we work well together, there's, there's no problems between the two. But a new facility is desperately needed and help move the town along. There is a CIP project. I'm not even sure it had a date, David, if it did, for the renovation or a look at the, the current facility in 2026, 2027. There is no price tag on that, because honestly, we don't even know what the building would need until we can get things out and assess where we are. Again, the building was built for five people, there's offices for, for chief staff for five people. One would think, common sense, we'd be able to fit in it much better if we'd take some of the crowding up, put it through the other building. But we aren't prepared, we haven't even done a huge, a great deal of, of backstory and analysis at all on what we're looking for. But again, in, in the efforts of being transparent, one would need to believe there's something would need to happen to that building once the police move out, to utilize that space more efficiently and what we can do. The building's going to need an elevator no matter who's in the building. So there will be things, but we're not prepared to put a price tag on that right now.
Yeah, but you have made it clear that that is going to remain as an important aspect of the overall fire protection in Exeter.
That is your central fire headquarters. We did not build offices for more than a shift commander at the substation. We did not build a plethora of bunk rooms to move people out there. Some of you are old enough to remember the fire department, when I started in '05, just came off asking the town's support to basically move central fire headquarters out on the Epping Road corridor. We heard loud and clear then that that really wasn't what the town wanted. So the fire headquarters remain at 20 Court Street, available downtown to anybody who wants to walk up for a fire permit and, or come see and talk to the firefighters, will be downtown for a long, long time. And this is where our call volume is. Majority calls are downtown, so we will stay downtown.
Do you have the answer of this, a vision in terms of where dispatch will be located?
Dispatch is moving to the new facility.
It is, okay.
Because, and again, I think the guys did a great job discussing a very complex topic. Because we've chosen the Epping Road water tower, due to its height and proximity to town, as our primary pushing the signal out, moving the, the dispatch center to Continental Drive fits right into that plan. It is very, very close to that Epping Road tower. Few obstructions, whether it's trees or buildings between now and then. We'll continue to be able to back up dispatch downtown. What that looks like, I don't know. I don't believe it's going to be an expensive console, but we will be dispatching out of the new facility. That'll be primary.
Thank you.
One of the things that I don't think was really stressed, you guys are human beings. You're entitled to certain things. And what was missed, I think, before was this recognition, you're our neighbors, you're our friends, although I don't necessarily know all of you, or any of you for that matter. But nonetheless.
It's good and bad.
No, no, but wait a minute. It's, it's important, I think, to be sure that it's understood. Many of you hopefully live in Exeter, that's another issue, but nonetheless, you, men and women are, I don't think it's appreciated as much as it should be, and I'll go back and say what I just said. You're human beings. You deserve, you deserve, because you're our, well, our friends and neighbors. You just deserve it. And I think that, that's something we, we were missing before. And I, having said that, I, I will not say anything more, but I think it's important that we, we recognize this.
Yep. That's kind of what I was saying to you.
Well, okay.
It's, yeah, it's another, yeah.
I appreciate the comment. And I do live in Exeter, and if you just let me know where you live, I'll bring coffee and doughnuts, I'll have a cup of coffee.
All 600 of us?
If that's what it, if that's what it takes, it works.
No, I happen to live in Riverwoods.
There you go. Well, Lionel, and again, many of you know Lionel Ingram, and we went up there, we did a great talk at the And we went up there, and we did a great talk at the Riverwoods.
Oh, yeah.
Josh was there.
Unfortunately, more times than we want to see with the little red vehicle.
It's all good, so.
But nonetheless, again, at least for, I'll speak for some of the people. I need to do a little bit of educational work, and trust me, I will do more than I may have done before. We could have well produced, just Riverwoods could have produced those forty-five votes. Now we're all old, but that doesn't mean we don't appreciate it. And I appreciate your support, so.
I have a question. I had a question.
You have a question? Well, Mr. Brown.
He's awake.
Yeah, I'm awake. These meetings go long enough, Pete, no offense.
Give him your microphone, Al.
I wanted to know, do you guys have a sense of the other communities of a similar size and where they're at in terms of facilities? Because I'm thinking through my own mind, and I know, I want to say Portsmouth is way ahead of Exeter, but I might be wrong, but I think.
Way ahead as in a bigger building?
Facilities. Multiple facilities, more updated.
Portsmouth has three fire departments.
Yeah.
Or, I came from Portsmouth. I spent twenty years at Portsmouth, working there. So they have three fire stations, one central station, like Chief Wilkin was talking about, and then they have two ones, and that's exactly what Chief Wilkin was saying, so they can service the whole city.
Right.
They're a little bit, they're bigger than us.
They are bigger, but three versus one, right? And they're not combined. Hampton has two?
Even if you look at Hampton, the population of Hampton.
Similar.
Year-round is similar.
Yeah.
Probably within two or three hundred people.
Right.
We all know that they balloon in the summertime.
Right.
And we're pretty constant, you know, along with our numbers. They have two stations. They have a central station and a beach station. And if you've been to Hampton, you know, one A and the beach, it's hard to get too special in the summertime.
Right.
There are a number of reasons for that.
Right.
But even communities that are emerging, and just in the time I've been in Exeter, I watched the town of Bedford really grow in population, perhaps quicker than Exeter. We've grown quickly, but Bedford has really rocketed.
I used to live in Bedford.
And they're building a second fire station down on South Street. Londonderry, well, again, their population has gone from in the mid-teens to almost thirty thousand people. They now have three fire stations. So those communities are growing and emerging. I'd like to say New England can plan, but I don't think we plan as well as some western developing states when they can look at their communities and see. But a lot of these communities have done a great job planning.
And this was a question, the exact question we asked the architect that we met with recently, and Dave asked the questions. We're asking for comps, similar-sized towns, for, you know, to, like, on your aspect of the question, but also the same, the size of the buildings that they're building.
Right.
Are we way out of whack? And they said, we're not. We're actually more frugal than some of the departments that are our size, that are building these new complexes.
But even the city of Laconia, the city of Laconia is at seventeen thousand people. They have a firefighting force of ten on duty, and they had three stations, and they consolidated to two remote. They kind of closed the middle one because they couldn't get to that Lakewood region. But that's a city that's virtually the same size as Exeter in population. And they run two stations and ten people, and we have seven on duty and one station. It's very, very hard, and although I appreciate the question, every community is absolutely different.
Sure.
Demographics are different. If this was an urbanized town, all, and we didn't have the periphery the other side of 101 and the sprawl kind of in the area more rural. The one station's adequate.
Yeah.
Our response has grown. Just in the eighteen years I've been in town, we went from responding to fifteen to eighteen hundred calls to thirty-eight hundred. So we more than doubled our call volume, predominantly EMS. Predominantly an aging community requiring an ambulance. But nevertheless, we went from eighteen hundred calls to thirty-eight hundred calls in less than twenty years. You can't respond on that amount of calls without equipment and personnel. You just can't manage the workload. So, and police the same way, whether it's taking calls into dispatch. We've had to hire dispatchers. It's handling crime on the streets and patrolling, going from one and two cars to three cars on the road. That has to happen, and that's how our communities are gonna continually evolve.
And, you know, we've seen it, and it's been in the news. We have a major hospital here. We're lucky, we're fortunate to have that, but that brings problems from other towns that dump problems on there, and now they're walking in our streets.
Right.
And, you know, and I'm not saying everybody that's discharged from the hospital is that. I'm just saying we've had cases where people, the cars are stolen, there's, and that doesn't show up on our population.
Right.
But it definitely affects our calls for service. We have, you know, the train coming through town where you have, you know, I don't want to say transient as in the fact of, you know, I'm not talking about homeless, but you have a mobile population in and out of the town of Exeter several times a day.
Right.
Yeah.
With, that aren't residents.
Sure.
And, you know, and the good things that have come in, the downtown, I just read an article about how all the restaurants, and we're actually being talked about, all the great restaurants here, that's drawing more and more people at night.
All the time.
To the dinner crowd that are coming in and utilizing the services of our town. And that wasn't around when I grew up here.
Sure.
Like, there was one restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
That was it.
I think the combination makes a lot of sense, and I think it, my real point, and I, we had talked about this previously, about the facilities and comp in the facilities. I think you brought Bedford up in the past to as sort of a model. But it just seems like we're behind in terms of providing as a community for both fire and policing. And it's, it would make it challenging for you guys not only to do your jobs, but I would think to recruit for your jobs and retention potentially, I would see.
Again, I think you hit the nail on the head with that. That's the biggest thing that we face, the biggest problem as an administrator in both of, I would say, our professions, is, at least on mine. I've gravitated that the next ten years of my life is going to be recruiting people to come work in a job that people don't want to work anymore.
Right.
We solicit from the Great Bay Testing Alliance. That's how we get our candidates that are brand-new police officers. It used to be hundreds of people would sign up for the test, and you would have this awesome list of everyone that passed, and you'd call them, and there was enough to go around. They canceled the test because only ten people signed up for it.
Wow.
And every police department in the state of New Hampshire, and I would say probably New England and all over the country, needs to hire people right now.
Yeah.
So that's what we're dealing with.
Sure.
For recruitment. And there's times where I get candidates in, and I strategically walk them through certain aspects of my existing building because I'm trying to put our best foot forward because we're coaxing these people away from other things.
Right, right, yeah. That would be quite the opposite.
A candidate is now grilling us. We do not interview the candidate. The candidate interviews us. When they see a community invested in public safety or services, they see a community they're willing to grow with.
Right.
They see a community that is not willing to invest in public safety, apparatus, police cruisers, fire stations. They see a community they don't want to invest in. They're gonna move to somebody else that is, and that is absolutely recruitment and retention. Not a scare tactic.
No.
We will attract more quality candidates when we, as a community, demonstrate we can get behind a project and we are gonna support public safety with that. It's just a fact. It's not a scare.
Is there a retention issue?
There has been lately, and I can't put my finger on why, except COVID begun to exacerbate probably an underlying problem that existed of an aging response force, and many have begun to leave. Newer generation hires tend to work with a different work ethic. I think they're willing to work, but they like a better work-life balance. So, you know, they're weighing, I realize I need to work to feed myself, but I also want some time away. And when we do things like forced overtime, mandatory overtime to cover shifts, it's a double-edged sword. You know, we're ordering somebody to work, and we're creating a morale problem because they really don't want to be there. They'd rather be with their family in a way. So it's an interesting retention tightrope we're walking right now, both fire and police. Today, I'm pleased to tell you, the fire department's full. For now. I don't know how long it's gonna last.
Until you go back to your office.
For now, but that isn't because we didn't have problems. We used to have forty people apply for one job. It has absolutely changed. There are forty jobs, only one person applying statewide, and it's, that's where we are in public safety. So we can go on all night, and there are some awesome people back here dying.
Thank you, gentlemen. I've had a lot of time and detail.
The only thing I want to cover with you, if I may, is just a fire department thing, is the, we have two projects, an addition to the police station and a fire station up on page, on page fifty-one. We're seeking your support to replace a sixteen-year-old utility pickup that used to plow and do maintenance work and drag trailers around. There's a significant narrative there, along with the Mercury Fleet study that we used to subscribe to years ago, did a good job outlining some of the issues of the vehicle and how that rated. Car one, the vehicle I drive, it's department manager transportation is also up. The car is ten years old. It doesn't have a lot of miles, but it is beginning to age, and the DPW, Harry Lindsay over to the garage, is doing a great job keeping them on the road. Those are our two projects that we are bringing forward for twenty-four. I believe I ranked them. It's in your packet. If I had to make a choice, I would choose the pickup truck utility over my vehicle because it's imperative that we have a solid vehicle we can plow and is safe to transport trailers around. So again, I realize you're gonna have to make some tough decisions and deliberate. I'll make it a little bit easier on you and say, pickup truck over my vehicle, but both meet the definition of replacement, so they're in the packet. There's a fire truck looming down the road. There's another ambulance looming down the road, but they will be anyway. We have four of them, so the engines are gonna stack up periodically. So, but again, you have a long, long night. Those two vehicles are the only two projects that we have.
The ambulances are paid for themselves.
We fund the ambulance through the ambulance revolving account. We ordered one in two thousand twenty-two. Keep your fingers and toes crossed. We might see it in two thousand twenty-four. That's the prediction, April of twenty-four, two years to build it. About that time, we'll come back to you and ask for another one. But, so, yeah, but ambulances are funded through the revolving account, so you don't see those in the tax. Cool.
Thank you, chief.
I thank you so much for your time. I know these guys want to go.
Thank you.
Who's next, Dave?
Next is Greg Beeson.
Oh, good grief, okay.
Parks and Rec Division Director.
All right. Dave, we'll start with the plan of playground renovation.
Fifteen.
Back again. Obviously, we went through a lot last year to come up with the design for Planet Playground, but eventually, we had to pull it because we still don't own the land. We're still in negotiation with said company. Hopefully, things look bright, and we'll be able to move forward with this. And when we do look for, move forward with this, we are applying for the Land Water Conservation Fund to help offset fifty percent cost of the playground. One of the aspects, I think we were a little ahead of ourselves last year, was the port-in-place surfacing, which, for those that follow the bills up in Concord, Governor Sununu just passed a bill that mandates any playground built after January first of two thousand twenty-four is required to have unitary, Jen, help me here, solid surfacing or something, so it's accessible. So our own Gabby.
So no loose material?
Yeah, no loose material. So similar to, if anyone's been to Main Street, they use Exeter as a example of how schools and playgrounds can be adapted to allow accessibility with the mats we had. So that is something that is gonna be required if and when Planet Playground is rebuilt. But again, it all hinges, and this would not move forward unless we are awarded the grant from LWCF, which is funded for nine hundred million, and the state of New Hampshire is begging for projects.
Land and Water Conservation Funds, okay?
Yeah.
You, I know you answered this a hundred times, but the playground that's there just, in everyone's opinion, is beyond repair. Splinters or?
Leathers and associates who helped build it did a report several years ago that said that it should be replaced.
Only because it's, of the, all, every playground in town, I've been to all of them. That's one my grandkids love the best.
It is a very unique and iconic.
I love seeing everyone's names and, you know, who participated in building it. You know, they're all carved in and everything.
Yeah, we would look to repurpose those in an art installation to do an homage to them. But, yeah, unfortunately, our summer camp calls it hashtag splinters. We take a lot, a lot of splinters out of kids' fingers and hands.
Yeah. Any other questions on this one? Carry on.
The Park Improvement Fund? And now I see, number one on the Park Improvement Fund, we're actually doing something this year because it's very much required, or else we're gonna lose some tennis courts. So the Park Improvement Fund was made to help improve the parks. A lot of these you see listed. We had listed last year. We had a lot of our estimates come in extremely high. So, and we ended up allocating, and we'll get to this next, is allocating twenty-five thousand out of the Park Improvement Fund to go for the Ten Hampton Road renovation, and I'll go into more details for that. But the parks are getting older. Same thing. They're not going away. Lots of infrastructure needs to be improved. Benches are breaking. Turf is not in good shape, trees. We're very much about planting trees, as you know. And the Park Improvement Fund helps us get there. Bigger things down the line that we're gonna have to tackle eventually are the bathhouse, which we just got the facility assessment report back, which basically says it's built in nineteen-seventy-four and should be replaced within a few years. That'll be down the line. Our tennis courts, even though we're repairing the cracks, will need to be rebuilt. We obviously, Langy, we have a pickleball craze that we're gonna need to eventually get to. So these are all things that we can get and improve the parks now that we have, so it's actually easier to maintain when they're all in good shape, so we're not doing triage. So the Park Improvement Fund is a very important part of our aspect.
How is that funded? Is that a?
The last couple of years, Russ has had it come out of the unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
That has not been determined yet, and that's above my pay grade.
So Greg, do they give you a budget essentially? Is that?
Yeah, they give, Aaron, they give a hundred thousand dollars, and we chip off, and I will go to the select board, and they're the ones that are the fiscal agent. So anything expended has to go to the select board first.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Probably some of the sidewalk. Probably some of the sidewalk money.
Yeah. Very similar to the capital improvement they have. But there's, you can definitely see the big improvement. Townhouse Common being one of them has been a really big jewel. Anyone that went to National Night Out, the chiefs both said they loved it there, and they'll probably keep it there because it was such a good turnout.
I think the new playground set up on Park Street, I drive by that. I think a few of us live out that way.
Yeah.
It looks like it's getting a lot of use. It's great.
The moment we opened it.
There's a fence around it.
Yeah.
That was always a scary.
Yeah, it's really nice to have in that spot.
And we got a fence that actually blended in, so you really drive by and you don't notice the fence, per se. You notice the playground equipment and the bright colors, and if anyone actually notices, it's the Parks and Rec colors.
Yeah.
It's a blue and green, so that's something we integrated. But the most important, Aaron, is it is accessible.
Yeah.
The second day it was open, I had a photo from a resident whose child's in a wheelchair, and she's like, this is the first playground. I can actually wheel my daughter and put her on a swing.
Yeah, that's great.
This is a question I should know the answer to. Do you have anything to do with the playgrounds at the schools, or is that?
No, that is Rusty Lister at the SAU.
Yeah.
Is it not accessible? They've got about two feet of mulch on them.
And the wood fiber, the certified wood chips are difficult. They are ADA compliant, but they try pushing, try pushing a chair through there. The compaction is not the greatest when you have a thin wheelchair.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you're seeing.
And lastly, this is kind of a good, good reporting back to you guys. Last year, you've been very supportive in the acquisition of Ten Hampton Road. We're happy to announce that, if you have read the news, we got a grant to finish the renovation of Ten Hampton Road.
Yeah, that's great.
So I've broken it down, what we're gonna be focusing on. We wanted to include it in the packet for you guys to really maybe be made aware. And I have the. And I had the breakdown, how it is. It was a very unique match and grant opportunity. It was the Community Center Investment Program that Senator Sununu's put out last year. Okay.
Hold on.
Page five, Greg.
Sure.
You're on your Ten Hampton.
Yep, Ten Hampton.
Yeah, page six.
We like to read along.
No, no, no problem.
Community Center Investment Program.
All right, yeah, Community Center, we were awarded this past early summer, a grant for $998,240. You'll see, it's a unique grant that the Senator put out there. It was only a 15% match, and with the Select Board and Melissa and Russ, we came up with a variety of funding options to be the match. Thirty-seven out of our RECP Revolving Fund, 36 out of our recreational impact fees, 25 out of our Park Improvement Fund. The unique part of the grant is you could have already, you could use funds already expended. So some of our minor renovations that we had started, not knowing we would get the grant, were able to be used. We did a Level Two Energy Assessment, which gave us some good points in the grant application. That was for $1,200. That again was able to use. We know there's $30,000 in utility credits, which gave us our $155,000 for our match. So Monday, the Select Board approved moving forward with a firm. We've, we're working with JSA Design out of Portsmouth to do a design and engineering of this. The one caveat with this grant, we need to start construction by the end of the year. So it's a fast-moving grant. We have until 2025 to finish it, so we have some time, but it's getting in there, getting the renovations going. And then the nice thing is, we have had a head start. The first floor, the offices, the program, some of the programming spaces have already been renovated. We have an ADA accessible ramp going on the backside of the building already. So we just have to focus really on ADA accessibility of the second floor. Replacement of the flooring to an ADA-approved surfacing and fix the transitions, create programming space on the second floor, obviously. Egress issues that we're gonna have on the second floor, there's an old farmhouse stair that is very steep, so that's gonna have to be, be rectified. New HVAC. So one of the things that we are very happy with, the Level Two Energy Assessment, and in the grant, requires us to try to become as much energy efficient as possible. So following the recommendations from the Energy Assessment, we'll go into our design. Number of things was, yeah, we're going to heat pump, where we're going to do insulation throughout the whole building, fix any broken windows, maybe replace them, replace doors, insulate the basement, make bulkhead doors. I mean, we're gonna go all out, go to a heat pump, water heater as well. So it'll be a shining example of reusable and reusing the space. It's very well-used already for parking, if you go by on a Saturday and Sunday, but this is gonna be the next step. So this was something we wanted to come and make you guys inform that we're gonna be moving forward, and hopefully in 2024, everything will be done, and we will be fully functional community center.
And have an open house.
And have an open house.
Okay. Dave?
Nancy might, I don't see her hand up, I mean, look, but I think she has a question.
Can anyone hear me?
We can't hear you, Nancy.
Okay. I don't know.
Can't hear you, Nancy.
Unmute, hit unmute.
No, she unmuted.
She's unmuted.
It was muted, she unmuted.
She has laryngitis, that's it.
How about now?
I don't hear anything.
I'm gonna go ask you.
Nancy raised her hand.
Yep.
Well, she's figuring that out. I have a question.
Sure.
So, so this building is currently, we own it, it's, what's, is anything happening in there now, or is it?
Not right now. We had some modifications to do to meet DOL standards before we could put anyone in there. So right now, and there's still some projects, there are still some lighting that needs to be addressed, plumbing that just needs to be finished up. The, the debate now, and we've talked, do we move? Do we stay? Do we move in and then get renovated around us?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that they, no one even knows I'm in this meeting.
Nothing is happening right now there. We use the carriage house for storage, really.
Do you think that it'll be ready for the camp kids to use next summer?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I don't wanna stick them in the bathhouse.
Oh, my God, yeah, last week was rough.
And we're actually close, we're almost close enough to put them in there this summer, but it's just been a number of delays.
Yeah, right.
Greg, if Nancy could ask the question, she would like to know where the skate park, sorry, we're going back.
She can, we just heard her.
Did you get it now?
Lost it.
Beautiful.
Yeah, there we go.
I believe you can hear me now.
Yes.
Right, okay, so sorry, I've been in this meeting for seven after seven, I was late and late. If I could just interrupt and go back to the previous one, Greg. Greg, I'm curious about a to-do list. I've asked you about this, but I'm not sure if it falls anywhere as far as our parks go, the skate park on Court Street. It's looking pretty sad. Is that on a list of projects in the future?
I would come out of the Park Improvement Fund, so fixing it up with the Park Improvement Funds. My first year as director, we restored it back to its normal condition, and within a year, panels had been busted out, graffiti on it, so it's a consistent battle.
Isn't that part of the culture?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, sorry to interrupt, but I'm not seeing graffiti, I'm seeing rusted ramps and things like that, so.
Yeah, that's on our to-do list to replace those. They're not cheap, like the mini half-pipe that's there was $85,000. So getting, working with the vendor to get new sheeting. But one of the things I did discover in talking with skaters, they removed one of the railings, and there was actually a safety reason why, and it actually made sense. The mini half-pipe, there's one railing missing. And I told them I'm gonna put it back up, they're like, well, if someone's on the mini half-pipe, how am I gonna get to the top to be on the mini half-pipe? So they did it to climb up, which makes sense.
Yeah.
But yeah, Nancy, that's on our, on our list.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
I had a question too. I, I think I'm just ignorant on this, Greg. Planet Playground, refresh my memory, partially on leased property, right? And you're trying to negotiate acquisition of that?
Correct.
By getting out of the lease to go into ownership, right?
The lease has expired.
That's what I thought.
And the company that owns it is located out of state.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they, we're negotiating with them to acquire it.
There's no way to leverage that negotiations, I assume, right?
What do you mean?
We're working aggressively.
Imminent domain kind of thing?
No, we don't wanna go down there, but we are working, actually, the three of us are actually working together to.
All right, tag teaming?
Yeah, to try to get it, because.
Where's the master?
Who's a good cop and who's a bad cop in this group here?
You know, Aaron, it's actually funny, when, this is a newer company that bought them, so when we first started talking with them, they were awfully surprised when they acquired the property and realized there was a playground, a public playground on part of their property. Because they had admittedly told me, we had never been to Dexter, we bought this and we looked on our portfolio and we're like, there's a public playground, okay. And so it's been an interesting conversation we've had with them.
Yeah. Well, good luck. That would be good to get that under ownership, for sure.
Yeah, the town's not investing anything on a piece of leased property anyways.
Yeah, right. Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
But we're okay that, we're there now.
We're, we're getting there.
Okay. All right.
Is there a backup plan to fund the play, like, so assuming the lease gets fixed and we purchase the land, is there a backup plan to get the playground renovated if the LWCF grant falls through? I mean, it seems like it's.
Crowdfunding.
Sure bet for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, seriously.
Yeah, no, doing a fundraiser. We would like to do, once, if we can get a PNS together for the playground, we're actually gonna start a fundraising effort to offset the cost even more. So knowing that LWCF isn't a done deal, it's important that we try to get something to offset the cost. Because it is, to replace a playground, and give a perfect example, Park Street costs a total of about $140,000, and we see the size of it.
Right.
That's a fourth, a quarter of Planet Playground. And then people look at it like, why is the, it seems a lot sparse or spread out, then you're Planet Playground, which Planet Playground is great, but compliance-wise with fall zones, there's some overlap that Planet Playground that wouldn't be compliant now if it was And a fall zone is if a kid falls and he would get seriously hurt.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
You got a splinter in all your work?
What?
Have you got a splinter over there?
Director of Public Works, interim Director of Public Works.
I've got a splinter over there.
Okay, Paul.
About Dave Perkins?
You're too old.
I'm holding on.
Steve Dalton here.
Thank you.
I don't wanna go there. That's what makes it interesting.
Yeah.
It's a great place.
It's a great place.
I love it there.
It's a nice park. Thank you.
Usually Nancy should stay up there. Take out a little color.
Somebody else has gotta do it besides me.
Yeah.
See if she raises her hand.
Don't we do this over the table?
Oh, yeah. But this is the joy.
What's that? I think I'm helping. Me?
Hi.
Over there.
Mr. Chair?
Where's that voice coming?
That's Nancy.
Nancy's talking to you. Nancy.
Yeah, it's me.
Nancy.
I think it's just that I'm, yeah, the handout, was that just from DPW?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Paul, would you mind putting one in my box downstairs before you leave so I have it?
Yeah, we'll get you one.
Thank you so much, or email it, I appreciate it, thank you.
And Nancy, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear everyone fine.
Yeah, I'm just saying that they're doing a PowerPoint presentation, so we can't see your little, like a mini screen of you to raise your hand. So I would just, if you wanna ask a question, just maybe unmute yourself and go ahead and ask.
Yeah, I tried that before, Dave, and it was, there was something blocking it, but I will do it again if I need to. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
You got the floor.
All right, Paul Falasich, interim Public Works Director. Dave was already introducing folks, but I'll do it again. We got Steve Dalton, the interim water sewer manager, and Jay Perkins, Highway Superintendent. Who's not with us tonight, and is a big player in our team, is Jeff Beck, our maintenance supervisor. He's actually taking some classes on maintaining vehicles tonight with his crew too, so he's not able to attend. And if you have any questions, we can follow up with any of Jeff's opinions afterwards too. So please ask any questions as we go along. The handout tonight replicates the PowerPoint, and let's get on to the first one. The first one is the Public Works complex, only we're boiling down to the Fuel Island replacement. If you recall, last year in FY '23, we were.
I'm sorry, I'm just telling them page one, so they can follow along.
Oh, yeah, and the pages are up on the thing here.
Thank you.
It's page one, sorry about that. FY '23, we were granted $50,000 to look at possible siting of another building on the adjacent lot, also looking at the complex on site circulation in anticipation of another building. And we know that a public works facility or a new building will take a long time getting here. We've been warning in some of our write-ups that the Fuel Island, and there's a picture of a portion of it there, is deteriorating, and it is now time to think about replacing it. What we hope by the end of the latest task of funds that were voted last year, that we would have a good location for the Fuel Island if it needs to change. So a little bit of homework still needs to be done for location, but we are in need of a Fuel Island for $460,000.
Does that include tanks too, or is it just the?
Yeah, that'll be the tanks replaced with that also, yeah.
The whole deal.
And at one time, a few years ago, we were debating above ground, underground, it would be underground tanks now.
Is there any concern with the tanks we're gonna pull out?
No, the tanks have been, there was issues a long time ago, that, that's all been situated.
So there are no leakers now?
There's no leaks right now.
Did I say right now?
Right now. Well, when we say that, there was leaks in the past.
Yeah.
And that's where a lot of reclamation activity in the parking lot had to happen already.
Thank you.
So you're replacing really the entire?
Operation.
Operation, fuel, pre-fueling operation.
Yeah, so we can track vehicles, we can track fuel usage, you know, it's just a, it's time. We have some of the bases rusting out, canopy's getting pretty old.
So what do you do with that facility, the existing facility now? In other words?
Gone.
It's gone, it's just, it's, it's literally demolished and everything.
No, the Fuel Island right now?
Yeah.
It's been, we use it.
I understand that, but.
Get the new one.
If the new one goes in, what do you do with the old one?
We get rid of it.
Okay, thank you.
But you gotta dig all out of tanks and take all of that material out and.
Do you want it?
Remove that.
Do I want it? No.
They have a bonfire.
Yeah.
Community bonfire, Big Pig Rose.
It really burned well, too. But, you know, the first thing we're gonna need to do is to site where the appropriate spot for that is, and it might not be in that location.
Right. Whatever is there has to be removed in the process, I suspect.
It will be, yes.
And this cost includes that demo cost?
Yes.
Okay. The existing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Because that's, yeah, because it's all, that's all like hazardous materials and needs to be.
All kinds of stuff.
Very expensive to dig up tanks.
Next one?
Next one.
Okay, this one's gonna take a little bit of an explanation, it's page two in your report. If you read it, it's a little scattered. We, boy, I think it was the town planner and the facilities group wanted a facility condition assessment as a way of trying to decide what type of improvements we need to do to our buildings. That activity has been taken place, and we're just about final on our, on our final reports here. And with that, we knew that we have a certain budget now, and what we were seeing in those reports, and it took a little back and forth on the reports because some of the data we were seeing was not adding up correctly in the reports, so that took a while. Now we think we got that straightened out with the consultant. And we were seeing numbers that was a heck of a lot higher than what we have in our budget right now. What we have through the various buildings that we're maintaining, plus the Maintenance Projects Fund, we have $163,000 a year, that's, that's this year's numbers that we're using. And when you add up the 13 buildings of what's suggested for an annual expenditure because of however they did their, their. because of however they did their analysis, we're at 3/4 of a million dollars, so there's quite a gap there. We didn't have this calculation until like a week ago. So we didn't know if there would be a capital improvement project to try to fund some of this or whether we would adjust budgets. So instead of missing a chance for a whole year, we put a project in. Now we're getting the data. I think we are, it still is going to take some time to figure out all of the inferences in those reports to come up with a good plan. So I think it's probably my suggestion right now that this should probably come off of the CIP for further vetting of some of those issues in that facility's maintenance reports to come up with a good game plan that folks can buy into instead of maybe jumping the gun like I did here by putting in a CIP project maybe before its time. But the important takeaway, at least right now from where I sit, we've got a budget of 163, and we got suggestions that it should be up to $750,000 a year.
That's all the town-owned buildings?
That's 13 of them. I don't know if that's all of them, but I think, I think it's close to it. Okay. I was, I was hoping this would stay towards the end at the water sewer, but we have it as page number three. It comes up pretty dank way. As you know, over the last few years, there's been talk of new groundwater supplies. That is happening in the background right now. There is not talk of eliminating any of our surface water sources. And with that, we've got the Exeter Reservoir Treatment Plant that was built in 1886. We've been putting some substantial Band-Aids on this for a while. We thought it was time to start looking at the replacement for a surface water treatment plant. And with that, we did put in for a SRF loan through the drinking water, and our pre-app was successful at $200, $2.5 million for an SRF loan. Now, does that have forgiveness in it? I can't tell you that right now. I haven't been able to find that answer yet. But at least there is a pre-application approval for the SRF at $2.5 million. And, okay, $2.5 million, what the heck are we gonna do with that? I'm missing the most important part. So there'll be a preliminary planning and design study. Make sure we're doing this correctly. We're looking at the things that we need to be. If you recall, probably back in the 2005 timeframe, I'm guessing at that, but it's about that, there was some proposals for a water treatment plant very close to this location, right behind it by where the gun club is, on the side of that for a water treatment plant. And I think that would be a starting point for location. There's all kinds of good geotechnical data, there's full designs. I don't think some of those processes will be the same anymore, but we would be looking at preliminary planning and design for that. And it would also take us through final design and cost estimating also. And right now, with the consultants that helped us with this SRF pre-application, we've got a general estimate of almost $26 million. We're a few years down the line after that.
Can you not meet the new regulations in the current plant?
We are meeting the current regulations.
I shouldn't have worded it like that. I apologize.
Yes.
It was poorly, poorly asked, but I just want, I mean, the PFOAs and the PFAS, it seems like those are fairly new and probably really difficult to get rid of or to, I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, if we go much deeper in this, I'll have to start calling up the experts here.
Okay, I'll stop.
But, yeah, we are challenged with that plant. And we've been spending some decent dollars in there just to keep it running. And I think with the potential SRF loan in there, it makes it a little bit more viable situation to be looking, looking at what we can do with that. Okay.
Does the state...
Oop, I'll go.
Just a quick question. How does the state get involved with this kind of a project? Do they oversee it? Do they approve it? Do they don't give a hoot? Or I'm sure they're gonna be breathing it down your neck, but I mean, is there a... How does it work, I guess?
Yeah, anything you do with drinking water will have that type of oversight approval, especially if their money is involved in it.
Yes.
They will be project partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is our adaptive management plan that we put together for the Great Bay Total Nitrogen General Permit. That really limited the amount of nitrogen through wastewater treatment plants that go to Great Bay. But the adaptive management part of it starts taking it from the wastewater treatment point sources and now takes it to the, to our stormwater drainage systems, our non-point systems, and says, hey, what kind of plan do you have of removing nutrients from those non-point source systems? And for the health of Great Bay and, you know, and our connection to that. So we've got a proposal in here this year of 105,000. And again, I've been giving you a little bit of backstory on previous work that we did. And some of the backstory for this one, and I'd like to point out, is the watershed assistance grant that we got a couple of years ago. And it took quite a while for that funding to come through. And we're working on three different portions of that. We are working on a fertilizer component. We are working on an advanced septic system incentive program. And we are also looking at new installations of where we could install stormwater improvements to remove some of these nutrients in our current system. The bulk of this dollars here is, the 90,000 part goes towards the advanced septic system incentive program. And if you say, hey, I haven't really read anything about this, it's because we're not done with the report of it. And we think that we're gonna start getting a draft of that next month. And basically, and I'll just use my terms, my easy-to-understand terms, is you'll have a septic system, and through groundwater migration to the water bodies, you'll have nitrogen moving that way. Well, there's another part of a septic system that you can put another piece of the train in there that when it's running, the effluent that gets into the ground has much less nitrogen in it, and then much less nitrogen going to the water body eventually through the groundwater. So back when we were trying to devise this adaptive management plan, we said, well, these things sound pretty good for nutrient help of Great Bay, help of water bodies. Is there a way we might be able to incentivize having people put these in there? And that might be no-interest loans, it could be contributions to it. So we have part of this grant, number one, finding out where our septic systems are. Number two, what is the different treatments out there? Those other trains that might be viable for this? Number three, where are examples where other people have incentivized homeowners to move towards these advanced septic systems? And gel that into a report for our reading and see if that's something we wanna get on board with. So now, where did the $90,000 come from? Back when we were devising this adaptive management plan, we had some preliminary numbers that it would add about $15,000 to a septic system, which is a substantial amount. So just quickly, it's like, okay, how many replacements are there in town? Or how many new ones come into town? And we came up with a number of about six or so. So if you think six times 15,000, yeah, it equals 90,000. And that's how the 90,000 got there. So that's where that number came from. Right, wrong, or indifferent, and still, the town hasn't decided or haven't even started debating what to do about that because we're waiting for the information, and we should have a draft of that next month. So that was a long-winded story of this particular CIP item.
Questions, thoughts? Happy you have a septic system?
Can you explain that one again? The six times 15 equals 90, I got that.
Okay.
Did you say six systems came into town?
Yeah, there wasn't that many.
Yeah.
There were relatively few.
Six of these?
No, there were six septic systems the year that we looked at.
Six septic systems came into the town of Exeter?
Yeah, six to eight or so. And then, and really, you know, one of the things that we're going to probably get in debate of is you probably want to incentivize people closest to the water bodies.
Yeah, right.
Because...
And probably the existing.
You'd get way more benefit that way than somebody far distance from there, too. But that's all debatable, and...
Yeah.
Let's not get hung up on my little calculation there. But that's where the number came from.
Yeah, so it was six new ones, you were saying?
Or replacement ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was gonna say, I think water body and replacement would probably be the huge one, but, cool.
Thank you. Okay.
A pickpocket dam. Again, I'll go backwards. Right now, we're in the feasibility study of what the heck we're gonna do with the dam to bring it in compliance. It's now a high-hazard dam. We know it cannot pass discharge. We don't have the discharge capacity without going up over top at a freeboard for the later storms. The feasibility study should be, the draft of that should be finished in January of '24. And some of our deadlines for that is letting the New Hampshire DEZ Dam Bureau know what our decision might be for what we're gonna do with the dam in June of '24. And then our next deadline after that is whatever we decide to do, have it complete by December of 2027. So with that, there is a request right now, as this is going on, for 50,000. And it's a $50,000 figure for just in case. We know that when we went through the great dam feasibility study, there was lots of questions. And we had to get other answers than what we thought we were just going to be providing to the citizenry. We haven't had any curveballs yet thrown at us on the pickpocket feasibility study so far, but we haven't really came up with tremendous amount of results where people can sink their teeth into issues yet. Again, the draft final report is due in January '24. But what's real important is with all of these grants coming down the line, and there was one that just opened a week ago for like the NOAA fish passage and that kind of stuff, it would be nice to have the consultants to be able to do top-notch grant applications, too, to fund potential fixes. There's more for like fish passage and dam removals than there is for building things higher and wider. So, you know, it's all going to be what the town chooses for a fix. But in case we need to have consultants do extra work, as wide as 50,000 is in there. And it is just so that we can be a little bit more seamless and proactive when situations arise.
So are we looking at, as we did with the great dam, both application, both removal or repair?
We are going to look at anything at all. We're going to, hey, can we get rid of the high-hazard designation? And if we can, we still probably have to do something.
Yeah.
Can we make the spillway wider? If it does, what does that mean for improvements? Can we build it higher? Can we put, can we anchor it into the ground where it's not going to go away? Any of those issues are gonna be looked at. And then there's going to be like three or four of those. I don't remember how many exactly that we would look at more in depth for better answers. But one of those would be dam removal also. And that's where the funding, most of the funding available outside of our own pockets would be coming from.
Yeah.
Potentially.
And how do our neighbors in Brentwood feel about it?
They don't have anything to quite comment on yet because we...
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't. They do know that we're doing this study.
Yeah, okay.
And the river study folks have invited, somebody has invited them to the river study meetings, and we know that we have those on TV and stuff, too. So they're aware of what we're doing, but there's not a lot of information coming out yet. Good?
Anything else on the dam? Nope, go ahead.
Okay. So this slide, and you don't have to go to those pages at all. This is just a talk slide. You don't have to look at page 24, 40, or 33.
I'm rich as I know some of those pictures from last year.
This is just a reminder that there is needed annual replacements of our horizontal assets, our storm drains, our water mains, and our sewer mains.
Yeah.
And there's asset management plans that were prepared for all three of those, two in 2020 and one in 2015. And those were the suggested annual expenditures at those, at those times. And it's just a reminder for you as we go into, now you're going, I'm going to propose specific locations for improvements. And how we've been doing this is to have street projects or area projects there. We just finished over at the Park and Salem Street area where we replaced water sewer, some drain over there, redid the road, did a little bit of sidewalk. We are working on West Side Drive. There were some grants for that, that, a lot of community involvement, and that is being final designed right now. We got the construction monies for West Side Drive, too. The next one on the docket now is School Street. School Street's been on our list for quite a while. It was on our list last year to talk about at this time. It was on our list last year to talk about at this time. It did not make it down the road further, so it's back again this year. This year, well, let me go a little slower again. This is on page 22. And you can see the highlighted streets. We've already improved utilities on Lincoln Street. If our fire department was here, they'd say, you got terrible fire flow over here in these streets. So it'll be main replacements and also looking for areas to put in some of those stormwater improvements that you on the planning board see those quite often now, too. So with that, the, our consultant that put these figures together for us, and has been doing this over the last few years for us, also put in the pre-applications for the state revolving funds. And the clean water side of it, the sewer side of it, did get approved through a pre-app. Now, we were proposing just the design this year, but if you go through the SRF process, they don't just want the little bit of the design, they want what's the whole project. So the pre-app is approved for the design and construction of the clean water side of things. And the estimate for that portion of the 5.9 million is 2.6 million. But what's real attractive this year is there's a 35% forgiveness for that $2.6 million SRF, too. So prior to seeing the results of the SRF pre-apps, we were going to come to you and ask for design funds this year. But now, there's a construction component where you could potentially get some forgiveness of that loan.
Thoughts, questions? Moving right along?
Okay, so that's the next big project after West Side Drive, School Street. The next one after that is Water Street.
Okay.
Now, this one's important to talk about this year also, other than to say Water Street is next time, and here's why. Part of that SRF process, we put in for a component here to study Water Street, and we were successful in the stormwater planning side of it for $100,000. And this is to mastermind the stormwater improvements on Water Street. However, this is what's real attractive about it. If we're going to be replacing water mains, we've got to make sure that we know we're going to be replacing, excuse me, if we're going to be replacing drain lines, we got to make sure that the water line that we're going to replace in the same project is located in a good location, so you can do that, and also sewer. So now we can start planning all of our utilities for layout a little bit more, too. So it's not that the town is going to have to come up with very much money for this $100,000 planning effort because the, the planning, and I don't, I'm trying not to say the word grant because it's not a grant, it's, the loan has 100% forgiveness, so this would need to go to the town voters for. So this is a good planning tool, and all we need is an affirmative vote on this one. The project after that is Washington Street. And Washington Street, you heard of the citizens that did not like an intersection improvement over on Epping Road and Columbus Avenue, that get more traffic. We'll talk about traffic on this project then, too. But we really need to replace sewer line on this before we do anything to the, anything to the road. But that one is going to be proposed in FY '26, so it's a couple of years down the line. This one right now only gets a little bit of lip service, so you have an idea next year what's a little bit closer to you.
What did you recently do on Washington, like within two, maybe two years ago? Was that water?
No, that was a lot more than two years ago, but yeah, it was a water line, yeah. And that one needed to be done right away because we were having so many breaks in there.
It was bad.
Yeah. Waiting for a funding of a complete street type of thing was out of the question. We had to do the water line.
Okay.
Okay, sidewalk program, I heard that when Greg was talking about some of his playground and improvements. $200,000 a year is what we'd like to see in that. It was not funded last year at all. A couple of years ago, we had, I think, $120,000, what we were asking for. Costs are not going down, and the $200,000 is our latest calculation for that. And that's on page 23.
Sidewalks?
Okay. Pretty soon, we might have that interim water sewer manager up here with these projects, but let me try. Let me try. Okay. So septic receiving facilities, so these are the pumper trucks that pump out people's septic systems, come down to the plant, or they used to come down to the plant, and we had a plot, place for them to dump some of the stuff. We had a visit from Department of Labor, and they would like to see us do some improvements before we allow that to continue to happen. We did not have folks supervising the situation. We did not have a concise way of measuring their, what they were depositing, that sort of thing. So with some encumbered funds from last year
Septage, huh?
We were able to go through and almost complete a design, we're in the design of that now, of a septic receiving facility. And the, the construction estimate for that right at the moment is 675,000. And probably what I need to say next is that very last bullet item that anticipated revenues from the septic haulers would equate to about $101,000 a year. So you can see the real benefit for doing this particular project.
Where is that located?
It is located where the main headworks are, right near that, the existing
Wastewater Treatment Plant, 13 Newfield Road.
Yeah, it's right by the gate that you go back to the lagoons, that particular building there.
Okay.
So the town accepts septic from, I didn't know this, from haulers.
Word, septic.
So if I have my septic system pumped, the hauler needs to dispose of that material and they bring it to the towns, and the towns use the system to dispose of it, is that?
Yes, that's what would happen there.
Oh, okay, I did not realize.
And right now, that's, that's on hold right now, though.
Got it, okay, so Exeter is, so it's going to other towns?
It's going someplace else.
And they, the septic companies are paying a fee to the towns to dispose of the
Correct.
Well, that's part of the other, rest of the story.
I just know it goes somewhere.
Water runs on hell.
It's a little upside down.
We're also
As long as it does. Okay. Now, we are on the sewer capacity rehabilitation. The real title of this is the High Street and Cross Country Sewer Main Upgrades. This is on page 32 in the booklet. Last year, FY '23, warrant article 14, was funds to design improvements along that red overcapacity line shown there, entitled High Street and Cross Country in the sketch. That is just starting the design of that, the estimate to replace those lines, to replace at least the high street portion and also some of the sewer main up by the PEA houses that are being built right now. And then after that, there is 2,500 feet of relining the sewer main out there to remove ionized situations. And this is to add capacities to our systems in a system that has already had capacity. The dollar figure for this is $3.4 million. Last year, in the SRF process, we were potentially awarded an SRF for this. This year, it did not get approved. So if the town was going to do this, it would be without the SRF funds.
And you're looking for that to be In this current
Yeah, in this current.
Yeah, okay, yep.
All right. So now we are at Webster Pump Station.
Nothing you said, I have to leave.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. It's bedtime, it is dark outside.
The Webster Pump Station was in front of us back in FY '22, and it was approved for $5.7 million. There's other funds involved in that, $5.7 million. Gene Shaheen helped us out with $1.05 million. We got another $1.4-ish with, through state ARPA funds and also principal forgiveness of the SRF. As we are going through design, and you've heard this, costs are rising. It seems our consultant's estimate is we are at a shortfall of $884,000.
Money, huh?
Yeah. So we anticipate to bid this project this year. And we anticipate by bidding it in November, or late November, that we'll have good numbers as this gets closer to deliberative sessions and decision-making, hard decision-making, so that we have a more firm number than just a consultant's estimate for $884,000. That's our shortfall right now, according to them. And there is also the potential of amending our SRF loan that we already have for $5.7 million for this project also. It's not a guarantee, but it's a good likelihood that we could do that.
I don't know how you keep track of all these things, but you do a good job.
That's what PowerPoints are for.
Makes you look good, huh?
Okay. Now, Cross Road Tower, you heard about all kind of communication stuff earlier on this one. There's a picture of it right there. This was an, this was an add-on to our CIP early on. We were, we knew that we had some issues with water quality in this area. We had those same water quality issues recently. And we did a few different things, and we're thinking that we're probably going to pull this CIP project for, for this year because some of those other things that we did seem to be working okay. So my apologies for having this in here ahead of its time, but we're thinking that we might be on something a little different that would make this not required right now.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so now, now we get into a little bit of the vehicle and equipment talk. All that I can really do is introduce the items, and if you have specific questions, Jeff is not here, our, our maintenance supervisor that takes care of our fleet system, but we do have Jay and Steve here that could potentially ask, answer your questions here. The first one is an air compressor. This goes out there and runs all kinds of tools for us. It's about time that we replace this one here. If you need more technical than that, we'll get the guys up there to just speak up. Also, on the water and sewer side of things, since the compressor was, was listed with water and sewer, we'll keep with them, there is two vehicles that we'd like to replace. Oh, before I go on with that, let me just preface this whole thing, very similar to where I started with the asset management talk of annual replacements. If you go to the booklet last year of the six-year Public Works CIP, and you have the vehicles laid out, you'll see that same list, other than what was already approved. The six years where you would usually see another row of them come into play, there is no new vehicles added here. What Jeff did is he kind of stretched out those that were on the list last year over the full six-year CIP. We're only going to be talking about this year's proposal, but know that there is not new vehicles being added on our sixth year right now. He, he looked at our list and stretched it out a little bit more over, over an additional year as a way to save some of the costs. So with that, there's these two vehicles. One is for the meter reader, the other one that we prefer to have a pickup truck with that. Any specific questions, we'll get the guys.
Is that the lone last crown pick, or we still got a couple kicking around?
I think that's the last one.
It's the last one that we have for the water.
Okay, we got to have a ceremony somewhere.
Yeah, that one got donated to us because we used to just be a wastewater operation plant run by two, two operators. Since then, we've now got, we now have five operators running that wastewater treatment plant. When it was a lagoon, it only required two. Now we're up to five, five employees that, that run. Currently, they only had, originally, they only had one vehicle, one pickup truck. This truck was, this car 13 was kind of a spare vehicle, if you will, that got given to, or donated to the water and wastewater crew because five people couldn't fit in one pickup truck. And there are multiple tasks throughout the day in different pieces of, you know, places in town. Each of them had to be at separate times. So this is a pretty key piece of equipment, vehicle for us. The wastewater treatment facility is much bigger than it used to be. We also have nine wastewater pump stations throughout the town, and that's why we're asking for the plow package, because we do all our own plowing of the wastewater facility as well as the nine additional pump stations. So that was the importance of that four-by-four pickup truck for that.
So all of our meter readers are not automatic now? I thought we're on, they're all upgraded?
They are not automatic, they are radio read, but they do have to drive around town and get fairly close to the meters to be able to pick up. So they do go out, and she does, our meter clerk does use this vehicle daily. You know, they do read, they read every meter once a month. You know, I know, you only get billed quarterly, but every meter does get read it, read once a month, so high usage letters, you know, if people are using more water than normal, they can identify that and try to help the ratepayers get ahead of a large water bill. And then also, if there's a real estate closing, she has to go and do a, a read for the final, the final read, so it's an important vehicle.
And this has changed to hybrid. Are we considering electric vehicles yet?
I think, I think, so that would be more of a Jeff Beck question, we tend to let him spec it out, but I think we had had discussions about going straight up electric with that particular vehicle.
Yeah.
It might be a great vehicle to add to the fleet as the first fully-electric vehicle.
Do we have a charging station?
We do not.
So we would need
We don't, we would need to add that as well. And that's why it's a Jeff Beck question, because it involves more than just getting the vehicle.
It seems like that would be worth starting to invest in.
It definitely would. There has been discussions on it, yeah.
Going back to that site circulation of the public works facility, we have, you know, those types of charging stations in mind also to be looked at at that time. Got Jay. So I'm just having Jay up here because he can talk more specifically about some of this.
He's been waiting to speak.
Yeah. This is a highway six-wheel dump truck replacement. Believe it or not, that price is very low because it's, that's a full-size dump truck. We're going to replace it with a Ford F-550 hook body. We're changing our smaller trucks, so medium-sized trucks to hook bodies so that we can swap and match bodies, different bodies. It's a lot more economical to run, so we're going to downsize one of the dump trucks. So the cost of, to replace that truck in kind is, I think, $220,000, right around there. And so we're going to downsize it. You have any questions?
Questions on that? Nope.
Yeah, this is a 1991 trackless sidewalk tractor. They can pretty much take one heck of a beating. But they that machine mows in the summertime and also has a sweeper that goes in front of it for the summertime and snow blower, plow, and a milling machine that we would like to swap around to all of them. So we stick to the same kind. They're very expensive, as you can see, like everything.
So that's used year-round?
Yeah.
In different functions with different attachments, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have multiples of those? Or do you just have one?
No, we have two primary ones. And then we have a track machine that always try to keep a Penrith. And that will go through anything. You know, we only use that for winter operations, the track machine. But when you lose the sidewalks and you just can't push heavy snow, that's when that comes out.
Okay. So this is really 32 years old?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's old like me. Are you getting replaced too? Yeah.
Better not, Dave.
This is our street sweeper. It's a 2015 Timco International. It's extremely high wear. And we just put just under $15,000 into the blower. And it's a lot of wear and tear. And this is, we try to stay out as much as we can until freezing for the RMS4 permit. It's mandated we sweep. So it's just a lot of, a lot of wear on it, wear and tear. Sweepers, their life is generally five years in the private sector. And we're pushing seven right now. Yeah, yeah, it's a vacuum sweeper. We won't use a mechanical sweeper just because it won't meet any stormwater standards at all. Too dusty.
Does the MS4, like, does it mandate, like, how often you sweep? Like, what is the?
Yes.
What does it say?
Yeah, we have to do all the curbed areas twice a year or more. We try to do the downtown high-wear area once a week, sometimes twice a week, and get into the parking lots as much as we possibly can. So there's a lot of miles that we sweep with that.
Is that kind of partly associated with stormwater management to keep, get the dirt and stuff out of that water before?
We try to, we try to pick it up before it goes to catch basins. It's what he's here. Trying. But in the fall, the leaves, we try to keep those out of the catch basins too. So he's constantly going around and circling, trying to suck them out. No.
That's it.
Is it?
Yeah, so some of the MS4 stuff, we actually tried to get stormwater grants or an SRF for this also. We were unsuccessful with it. So you'll see a little blurb in the actual page 71 write-up saying we applied for it. But no, we were unsuccessful with that. And you had asked about the MS4. Well, we actually have in our adaptive management that we're going to be sweeping the downtown on a more regular basis and also try to hit some of the curbed areas in the fall, like Jay was saying too, to remove some of the leaves and that way for our adaptive management plan too. So there's extra weight put on this because of the way that Jay is maintaining our streets. And I think that's about it.
Where does all the sand and gravel and leaves and some of the dump? I mean, that's got to count up after a while. Is there a process that this? The old sand pit, do you fill that up?
It goes out there and we'll collect for a few years and have it tested. And if we can, we contost it, if it's clean enough. But it's isolated, it's in the back, we keep it separate.
No, she's still there, okay.
Now it's my turn. You got more. Just go to page seven.
Okay.
And I'm easy, I'm page seven, eight, nine, and 10. And I'm going to go in that order.
Okay.
And it's all these you've seen before. They've been in prior, prior CIPs. And only one is, or two are proposed for funding. The first, and there's a question mark with one. The first one is the Capital Reserve Fund for ADA Improvements. This, back in 2019, a warrant article passed to fund an ADA disability access study for all our buildings and our, some of our public spaces as well, including our parks and so forth. So they did a pretty comprehensive report on all that and identified all the spaces that, you know, needed to be improved, could be improved, and so forth, that didn't meet maybe current ADA standards. And of that generated a list with, you know, costs, you know, estimated costs associated with it. And obviously, like as everything, there were a lot of, a lot of costs. So the town manager last year proposed to start a capital reserve fund for these ADA improvements. And it passed the warrant last year for $50,000. And there's $50,000 in that fund. There is a project going on, an ADA project, improvement project going on over at the town hall, which I assume is going to come out of here. I haven't, you know, confirmed this with Ross. But we haven't caught up on this yet. I just wanted to carry $50,000. I believe the ask is going to be again, so I'm just carrying the same as, as we did last year. But I just want to make sure we're, you know, we're using the funds and have a plan. But I'll be more informed on that on August 24th, when our second, when we have our second here. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, the next two you've seen before, the complete street study. This was originally kind of in line for 2024 this year. But two years ago, the downtown parking, traffic, and pedestrian flow analysis was approved. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Two years ago, the bike and pedestrian master plan was approved. And then this passed warrant, the downtown parking, traffic, and pedestrian flow analysis was approved. And so right now, I got two of these studies. The bike and ped master plan is working with the master plan oversight committee. We're getting to a point where, you know, probably 70, 80% completed with that project. But we're just getting underway with STANTEC on the downtown parking. So I just, it's going to, it's going to overlap. These studies are going to overlap, so I just best, I can't, for bandwidth-wise, this is going to have to wait until 2025, whereas originally for next year. Page nine, the master plan. I know we just, you know, it seems like we just did it, but it was 2018. And the state recommends every five to 10 years. We are, you know, almost done with all the, you know, this, I think, 67 action items in the master plan. I think we've, we've either worked, we're working on or completed, you know, close to 50 or 50 of them. So there's not a lot left. So we'd be looking to do that again in 2028. So still, we're still, you know, a few years away. But it's, it's in the six-year plan.
Yep. Get it on the radar.
And finally, is a rains barn improvements. There's a, on page 10. There was, I think it was, what, 2022? There was about $249,600 worth of improvements identified to the building. Some structural, some, the building envelope, it was not weather tight. It was getting inundated with rain, water, sills were rotten. There was multiple things that couldn't, they, it's a very used, it's a very active place. It's used for a variety of functions through the Conservation Commission. They do snowshoe walks, there's, you know, people go there, there's trails and so forth. So, but the barn cannot be utilized, so they embarked on this project to shore it up and actually have it available for a space for, you know, these gatherings to go. Because much of it was inaccessible. So that passed. But, and then there was funded also with some land community heritage investment program grant. And, but then due to, due to the rising costs since then, over the last year or so, post-pandemic building costs increased, and we're not able to achieve all the repairs identified. So asking for an additional $76,200 to complete the remaining work that was originally identified that needed to be done, that included clapboards and paint on the north and west sides, installation of interior staircase, and fire alarm detection. And of that $76,200, $20,000 will be asked up for a moosh plate grant to offset that. And this request is contingent upon receiving this grant. So if we don't get the grant, we'll probably hold off and, you know, try again the following grant round or try to find some alternative funding.
So that's for FY '24?
This is for FY '24. We're asking for $76,200, of which $56,200 will come from the town, $20,000 will come from the moosh plate grant if successful. And we would only move ahead if successful. Any questions on any of those?
Don't see any hands stick up, nope.
And that is the draft. As you know, the process next time, this, this is kind of a, to do the presentations, inform the board of all the, because you've gotten a lot of information. There's a lot, a lot was presented tonight, but time to absorb it and the public to absorb it. And then we schedule the public hearing prior to the next meeting. It starts at 6:30. We have the public hearing, any public hearing comes in. And then at which time, you know, any comments you might have. And then if you're comfortable, we'd ask you to adopt it. So then it'll move on through the budget committee and select board process and eventually on to the, to the town warrant in 2024.
So we're starting at 6:30 on the?
Definitely starting at 6:30.
I got to remember that. Otherwise, you better make sure you're here, okay?
I won't be here. I'm going to be on a leak. I won't be missing you.
Vacation again, huh?
Yeah, again.
The previous?
You'll be fine without me. I'm confident.
Prioritize.
How does he know?
Not the right word to use. We've identified projects that we feel are really important and like we may have.
You have done that through your transmittal letter. And that's usually done after the public hearing. You do it at your second meeting when you do the transmittal letter. I just have a generic, but then I encourage you to add any comments you might have. And, and then sometimes, yeah. But sometimes we've had discussions about, because people said, oh, well, we'll pass on this year. You can bump it to next year. I think the planning board's role in this is to identify the department heads saying this is a need and there's a. And you confirm that it is a need. The funding and so forth is not for this board. You know, or how it gets funded or when it goes on the warrant, that's for the future. So that's all I ask. Don't, you know, you don't need to get caught up in the price tags and so forth in the budgeting. Just determine the needs. But feel free to actually, you know.
But good to think about it between?
Say whatever.
Next, yeah.
Yeah, and you can, you know, if you, if you don't think something's important or an immediate need, yeah, move it. You know, not, not to do with funding, you know, just because like, okay, you know, not related to funding like, oh, we can't afford this. It's just like, no, this is, this is best to, this can wait. So encourage you to do that if you feel that's necessary.
Okay.
But we're adopting it.
You adopted.
We adopt.
Jerk.
But we're not adopting the funding. All we're doing
Correct.
is adopting in principle.
Yes, saying this is what we've identified as the capital needs for the town of Exeter from now until the next six, you know, for the next six years.
But it's, that's equivalent to an endorsement. I'm troubled with the word adopting. But if that's what, if that's what our procedure is, then I go along with it.
Yeah.
It is an endorsement.
Okay.
Absolutely is. If you don't feel anything that like, you know, should be, is, should be changed, modified, it's your plan. I think the next meeting at the public hearing is the time to hear that. Or, or now if you have concerns, so people know what it is and they can.
I don't, I don't have any concerns at all right now. Other than, other than anything in here which, which looks like it has safety implications. In other words, last year or the year before, there was a question regarding the improvements to a boardwalk. And again, I may be wrong, but that was a safety concern. And what I want to be sure here is that there's nothing in here that we're not addressing because, or excuse me, I'll say it another way. I think it needs to be addressed because it's a safety concern and that's potential creating a liability on the part of the town if we don't focus on it. So having said that, that, I haven't identified anything as such that I could see. But anything that, once again, where the public could be injured by the fact that we're not stepping forward and attending, and focusing on it, that's a concern to me.
Thank you, Pete. On a slightly different matter, I wanted to point out that there's an important vote coming up next Tuesday. That's dealing with water and sewer, or sewer. It's extremely important. And if anybody hasn't thought about that, I'd wish, ask them to consider that and please make an effort to vote on that next Tuesday. And I guess the high school gym, usual place? Yeah. So.
Can I ask? Are you dating yourself with the high school there? Old high school? The old high school?
The old high school?
Nancy Blanger.
Yes, sir.
Are we having a HAC meeting tomorrow?
We are, 8:30.
So there will be one, even though you're not going to be there.
Well, I will be, but I'm just going to stay in a far corner because we, we're not televised.
Okay.
I'm not feeling well and I don't want to be around people, but I'll mask up and stay far away.
All right, thank you.
Dave, any master plan discussion?
Beyond what I've already mentioned.
Bond, letter of credits? Bond or letter of credit reductions?
Yes. Well, I think I already told you about those. Remember that I told you, I think I did. I told you about, I looked at all the ones before I got here. They all preexisted me.
Oh, yeah.
We got all, like, over $1.2 million or something like that held for a variety of, from a variety of projects.
Disappeared.
We're looking to, we're slowly but surely. We're looking to, we're slowly but surely, you know, giving those back because we don't. I looked into the law and I think I, I looked into this, the law, the statutes at the time, early two thousand, still had that six years kind of lose it or use it or lose it type thing. So if you impose an exemption, you got six years to use it. And if you don't, the reasonable time has ended and you should, you should provide the money back. The issue is, is those developers don't even know. They, they don't remember. They think, yeah, they've, they've cut the check. They wrote it. They, they paid for it and the town didn't perform on whatever improvement, you know, was specified and didn't, and didn't end up doing it. So
Yeah, a little house cleaning kind of.
I think legally, you know, we have to give it back. And so I'll, I'll keep you abreast more. I haven't released any since we first talked. There was, there was a batch of them, but, you know, we'll be releasing more because we have no, you know, we're not going to use it for something else. You know, we need to, we need to, and we need to clean it up and not just hold it and have it gather interest. So we're returning.
Most of them are adjourned.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.